Well. All right, so, um, welcome, everybody, to today's January nineteenth, two thousand twenty-one City Council meeting for Eureka City Council. Uh, thank you for joining us, and we will start our session with a roll call, please.
Mayor Seaman?
Here.
Councilmember Costalano?
Here.
Councilmember Moulton?
Here.
Councilmember Arroyo?
Here.
Councilmember Bauer?
Here.
And Councilmember Bregel?
Here.
Thank you, and at this time, I would like to say that at the recommendation of the city attorney, we will be pulling item C one, which is the city camping ordinance from today's agenda, and we will move it to a later agenda. And, um, we don't need to get a vote on that because we just pulled it, right? We're good?
Yes.
Okay, and then in that case, we will go ahead and, um, you know what? I think that I always get to do a pledge of allegiance, and I think we need to share that. So I'm going to ask Councilmember Arroyo, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance today?
I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, one nation for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I don't think that I've led that in I don't know how long.
I, uh, thank you for doing that. I'm sorry to just throw it on you, but I just realized today when I saw something about an elementary school, and I was like, they changed the pledge, I don't have to do it every time. So everybody else be ready in the future.
And don't forget to look at the words, um, instead of just reciting after the mayor. We like to think we all know it by heart, but it's one of those things.
Um, we, do we have a report out from closed session? Mistress of the Attorney Black?
Mayor, no final actions were taken in closed session.
Thank you. Um, so now we're going to move on to the mayor's announcements. I just have a few things to mention today. Um, one of them is that this morning I was at a meeting with Main Street. They have received a USDA rural grant grant for downtown revitalization. So they're meeting with stakeholders to talk about, they're sort of assessing what the business climate is like and what they can do to help promote businesses in the downtown district. So it was an interesting conversation. They did a survey recently of, um, downtown business owners, and I won't go into all of it, but I will say that the, um, pretty general consensus, or it came out as green or very well-supported, was how people feel the city of Eureka supports small business. So I thought that was a really nice thing to hear, was that our business owners were recognizing that we have prioritized economic development. So that made me very happy. The other thing I want to mention is tomorrow I am going to be attending the Every Student Succeeds. It's usually a breakfast, but it's going to be after work tomorrow evening, and it is one of my favorite things to do every year. Uh, Eureka City Schools invites kids who have overcome some challenge and acknowledge them for the hard work that they've done, and you get one student from every school, and it's just really a very heartening event, and I'm very much looking forward to seeing, uh, who the students are tomorrow. Senator McGuire is going to be the guest speaker. And today we'll actually hear from somebody from HCOG, which is the Humboldt County, Association of Governments, and I sit on that committee. We look at transportation and big kind of county-wide infrastructure transportation projects. But I did want to announce that we have a new executive director who's going to be taking the place of Marcella Clem, who many of you knew. Um, and the new director is Beth Burks, so we're very happy to have her there. And then the last thing I want to mention, um, because it seems like the day before the inauguration, it would be, um, amiss not to, is, um, that tomorrow is the inauguration, and one thing that I think did not get nearly enough, um, coverage is that both the Humboldt County Democrats and Republicans put out a joint statement, um, which was a very, it was a very community-minded thoughtful thing to do, and I appreciated that they made that effort and that they took it. So I'll just read one part of it. Uh, one part of their quote, which says Humboldt County is a special place, and together we hope to be an example for the rest of our state, and how we can coexist and even work together. As tensions continue to run high, we retain faith in our democratic system of government, our faith of votes and voters, election officers and governors, Republican as well as Democrat, who certify election results in every state. And why that did not get more media coverage, I don't know, but I think that was a pretty, um, pretty bold thing for the, those two organizations to get together and do. So kudos to you guys. Yeah. And that is, uh, the mayor's report update, and we will move on now to, um, proclamations, and I, uh, Councilmember Bregel will be reading today's proclamation, which is in honor of human trafficking awareness.
Thank you, Mayor, and we have some people here I see to receive this proclamation. I thought I saw Laura out there. Okay.
Yep, I know Laura Mittlemas and Kelly, was Kelly Sanders? I saw, um, Torby, uh, Kristen, there she is. There you go. Okay.
You're muted. I'm sorry. Let's try that again. In recognition of human trafficking awareness, January nineteenth, two thousand twenty-one, whereas the United States was founded upon the principle that all people are created with an aliable right of freedom, and added the Thirteenth Amendment to the Constitution, making slavery illegal, and whereas slavery within the United States today is most often found in the form of human trafficking, which weakens our social fabric, increases violence and organized crime, and debases our humanity, and whereas victims of human trafficking are typically forced to work in various forms of labor exploitation, including but not limited to commercial sex acts, drug processing and distribution, and other services induced through force, fraud, or coercion. And whereas due to its isolating nature, many individuals locally and across the globe are unaware that trafficking exists in Humboldt County and their neighborhoods. And it does. Whereas it is estimated that more than twenty million men, women, and children around the world are victims of human trafficking, and whereas Seroptimus International of Humboldt Bay and Eureka are working to abolish human trafficking through education, advocacy, and collaboration. Now therefore be it resolved that the Eureka City Council hereby call upon the citizens of Eureka to recognize the vital role they can play in ending all forms of slavery, and to support the Seroptimus International Clubs of Humboldt County as they raise awareness through education and other efforts to stop human trafficking. Thank you so much, you guys. So appreciate you.
Yeah.
Want to say a couple of things, or someone?
Sure. Hi, everyone. Um, I'm Laura Mittlemas. I'm president of Seroptimus International Humboldt Bay. Um, and I'm here tonight, um, to represent not only my club, but Seroptimus International of Eureka, whose president is Donnell T. Garden, and I know Chris Torby has, um, joined the Zoom. Chris is not only a longtime member of Eureka, but she is serving now as our governor of our region, which is a really wonderful opportunity for her and for all of us. We're truly fortunate. So thank you so much, Mayor Seaman and members of the council for having us here tonight, and all else who are here on this Zoom meeting. We appreciate you, um, presenting this proclamation and lending your support to us. Yet again, I, I wish I could come here and, after speaking to you last year, and tell you that while the numbers have changed, things have really improved and give you great new statistics, but unfortunately, uh, you pandemic globally has done nothing but probably push those numbers, unfortunately, in the opposite direction. While we are trying to care for ourselves and isolate and stay safe, uh, we've given cover probably to more trafficking, um, and more repression and oppression of those, uh, victims that fall prey to this awful thing. Um, and so it really falls upon us to encourage and, uh, to be more aware than ever. The statistics, as I can tell you, and I relayed these to you last year, is that it's in every one of our fifty United States. It's all around the world. There are over forty million global victims, at least hundreds of thousands of them here in the U.S. It reports from the U.N. recently that over seventy-one percent of these victims are women and girls. Human trafficking cuts across all socioeconomic bounds and all age and gender groups, and includes all ethnicities. It preys on the vulnerable. Truly, human trafficking knows no bounds when it comes to the commodization of human beings. I'd like to tell you locally what we're doing here. Seroptimus is an international organization dedicated to the empowerment of women and girls through economic and education empowerment. Here locally, we are very involved, as Kim mentioned, in advocacy and education and truly awareness. The more of us who know what it looks like and who are truly the victims, the more impact we can have in our, in our communities in, you know, pushing it back and exposing it and eliminating it. Eureka's, uh, club recently had a wonderful success in collaboration with the Humboldt Transit Authority. Um, you've probably seen one of their buses with a really large billboard on the back that says, "Stop trafficking." It has a number for victims or people who are aware of victims to call, and that was such a great example of collaboration. Uh, Seroptimus International Humboldt Bay established an S-club last year. This is a club for high school-age girls, uh, and it has grown to almost twenty members. They are a phenomenal group of young women. Uh, they amaze me every week, and we are supposed to be mentoring them, and I think it's truly the other way. We are planning, or they are planning, a full, um, program during the month of March to celebrate Women's History Month, and one of those programs will be dedicated to human trafficking awareness, and this will be open to members of, uh, other S-clubs and through um, other, um, all ages and all clubs at the high school, so not just Eureka High, collaborating with Eureka Arcade and McKinleyville as well. Um, we're very involved with Safe House, which is Katrina Sims, so we work with law enforcement and members of the clergy. The idea is to make this multi-dimensional in membership, because it really takes all people, all perceptions, all knowledge at the table to be able to truly, um, make a difference here. It isn't only prevention, it is awareness. Uh, we must learn to really see it, to feel it, and to have open and compassionate hearts and minds, and mostly was, we must continue to take action. Thank you for your continued support, your concern, and your awareness. Uh, we were always, um, looking for other ways to be involved, so please reach out to us and let us know how we can join your collaboration and truly become an integrated force against this awful, excuse me, awful plague. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Laura, I just want to say that I just really appreciate your dedication and Seroptimus dedication to, to working on this issue. It's just, it's a horrific thing that many people have to go through, and it's awful. So thank you so much.
And it's important to have the reminder, at least once a year, that it is, uh, still quite prevalent. All right, Councilmember Arroyo?
I just wondered if you could, um, give us a little more information about where people can find resources online, um, to, to understand, you know, reporting processes. I know there's a lot of folks I've talked to who are bossy and intrusive like me, would be willing to report, um, things they see that just don't seem right. So could you provide some info about that?
Um, certainly, um, what I will do is reach back out to you with some specific information, because there are some tip lines and numbers that are very much a part of the network of reporting to give safe space for people, but I would tell you right off, call your sheriff. Uh, we know that we have an ally in Sheriff Hansel. He is present at our Safe House meetings, and, um, they've done, I think, made tremendous progress in education and awareness for the staff to help them identify who those, uh, people are when they are truly victims. So I would read, encourage anyone to report it that way. I think you could certainly go to clergy. Um, we work very much with FACE Center. There are a lot of organizations, uh, to your own clergy for people. I think that's always a good place to go, but let me please, uh, take up that charge and get back to you, Natalie, with some good information.
That sounds great. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you so much for coming today, and we will see you hopefully not in another year. We will see you before that, but maybe on another topic.
Thank you so much again for having us.
All righty. Um, next, we are going to move on to a presentation. I would like to invite Una Smith to come up. She is, as I mentioned, we are going to have a presentation from HCOG, and she is going to be talking about the regional early action planning or REAP, um, REAP grants that are available. Have we seen Una? There, there she is. I see her.
Yeah. Hi. Okay, so thank you, Mayor Seaman, for inviting me here to, um, present this program, which is brand new, and hello, council members and city staff. I, um, am going to share my screen, so, um, so this moth that keeps flying into my mouth doesn't, uh, you can watch the screen instead of that. Okay. Now it's covering one slide too. Okay, I'm just going to pedal right into it, um, to make the best use of time. So this is the Regional Early Action Planning Grant REAP, which, uh, some of you may have, um, heard of the LEAP program. The city of Eureka has some LEAP money, um, and I'll tell you about this one. I'll give you an overview to let you know this regional pot of money and HCOG's roles and responsibilities with this money, and then to date the initial feedback I've gotten about what to do with this money. So first, um, the overview of the program, which is a grant program, but it's an over-the-counter, so we are, um, we are basically pretty much guaranteed to get our money. So the REAP prod, uh, program was instituted by Governor Newsom in his twenty nineteen, twenty, twenty budget act, and it is for housing planning activities, and those planning activities are to directly help regions increase their housing and accelerate their housing production, all tied to the state's RENA, the regional housing needs allocation numbers. So it is being administered by HCD, the Housing and Community Development Department, and they're, um, funneling out into major streams. So it is regional money going to COGS, and in regions that don't have COGS, the money does go straight to the county. Our region has a COG. It's where I work, the Regional Transportation Planning Agency, HCOG. The other stream of money, um, they are investing in technical assistance in all kinds of housing planning needs statewide. So there's a statewide contract, and the team that won this is Placeworks and the Institute for Local Government. And our, um, team is called the North Team. This is, uh, Placeworks is the same, um, company that also won the technical assistance grant under LEAP, so there is some continuity in some of the staff people, which has, um, increased the effectiveness. So for HCOG's role, we are tasked with finding how can this regional money be best applied? What are the priorities? So my job and my coworker's job is to consult with stakeholders region-wide and establish those pri- priorities. How can this planning money, um, make an effect in making housing easier and quicker to build? And the, um, the Act of REAP does allow for suballocating money straight to sub-regional entities, and the, um, Notice of Funding Availability explicitly states that, uh, it has to be equitable and it can be direct. The eligible uses for money, if it is going to be sub-allocated to, um, sub-regional entities, and you'll see the theme in here is, uh, how housing planning throughout. So technical assistance to improve housing planning and permitting processes, anything from the general plan to form-based codes to, uh, help at the counter. Infrastructure planning, which, which support housing, housing trust funds, the planning part of that, of establishing one perhaps. And feasibility studies, for example, you know, um, organizations or jurisdictions who are still trying to get to their RENA number, which HCOG already did, um, they are looking for, um, what's the best way to apply those numbers for jurisdictions who actually have efficient, efficient sites where housing is possible to build. And then staffing, this money can directly pay for, um, temporary staff or consultants to fill staffing needs. So one thing that a lot of the big organizations or the, uh, NPOs, the big regional transportation planning agencies are doing, is that they are, uh, getting a consulting bench under contract for all array of kinds of housing planning activities that their jurisdictions have identified that they would want to tap into, and then the, um, the COG does all the administrative work, and so then it's very efficient, um, basically kind of opening up a, a purchase order, and then the jurisdictions can just request whatever, whatever way the COG would set it up to use those different consulting services. So that is an eligible use of funds. So now I'll tell you about HCOG's role and responsibility. So the funding was based on population. It's a one-time pot of money, seven hundred, seven hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. Uh, we were allowed to get an advance of up to twenty-five percent of the money to help us find consensus on priorities and build the program for which we will write a full application for the rest of the money. Um, I wrote a pre-application, and we were approved, we're under contract right now, uh, for sixty thousand dollars. So that's some of the money we've already been using to, um, come to this meeting and also convene with other stakeholders. So we have seven hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars left to program and apply for. So just very briefly, the, uh, activities that I was doing with that extra, not extra, that advance, um, survey the needs and assess priorities, so go out into the community and share information, try and get the best, best lay of the land of where different cities are at, and then identify best practices and equitable outcomes. So what are the kinds of best practices that locally people are actually interested in? Um, accessory dwelling units or, um, some of these new concepts like navigation centers, just things I'm just learning about. And then coordinate all of that and develop the program and then write the full application. So I've done some outreach. Your city has been active, um, the community development department staff have been attending some monthly meetings and, um, the, so I've covered cities and counties and special districts, and, um, we'll be going out to tribal governments. And then here are all the other entities, um, what's the term, including but not limited to. So these are all the people that, uh, I want dialogue with and, uh, learn about how do we together on the housing crisis. So, um, as I, as I mentioned briefly, we've started some monthly meetings, um, which HCD and our technical assistance team is on the call, so that's really helpful for getting information right away. But what the people here have said when I asked, okay, so what are your major issues? What is keeping, um, keeping us from being, being able to think the RENA numbers are in any way feasible or viable? There are things that I know all of you are aware of. Even in cities where, uh, the city is taking a bead with accessory dwelling units and infill, landowners might not be interested. Um, we don't have enough locations that are close to really good transportation modes, sometimes other than cars. We have aging housing, we have aging infrastructure, and so on and so forth. Then just in an open-ended question, uh, for more particip- participant input, the local, uh, housing planning staff mentioned these things on the screen, and, um, they mimic a little bit of the, of the first meeting, but also I'll just pull out like three prevailing wage relief for HCD-funded projects, a lack of developers to even build, and, um, CECL exemptions for meeting housing element objectives. And then HCD, so the technical assistance team, um, the North State that I mentioned earlier, they will be producing a lot of resources and offering a lot of, um, kind of like staff time to us. Right now, they are in the process of developing the plan, because they have to do this statewide, and they're trying to identify what are their priorities. So this was a survey question that they posed to our local housing planners. If we made toolkits, what kind of things would, would be helpful to you? And, um, you can see how, when asked for the top three, how that came out, and there were not, um, more than a dozen or fifteen people at this roundtable, so, um, that's how many people took this survey question. So the full grant application, um, I've had pretty consistent, very consistent consensus from especially the housing planners and also my board. I first gave an introduction to that, uh, update to them. They want to spend this regional money regionally, just because regional money does not come by very often. And our, um, primary idea is to facilitate the regional climate action plan that the county has been already working on. And as your city is in the MOU for that, so we can use LEAP money to get that over the finish line, and then also to help any city and every city that wants help adopting it or making the implementation plan, or, um, getting the CECL done, and we're going to help the county in their, in their top level tier of the CECL. And then as far as implementing, when the cities find housing planning components that are, um, measures in the cap, so for example, a city decides we're going to do infill and more active transportation, those are cap measures for reducing greenhouse gas emissions. We can get LEAP money to help pay for those things when there's a nexus to then helping housing get built faster. The other we want to put resources is to help with, uh, planning staff, particularly helping the small cities who don't have staff, uh, let alone community development departments. So we are going to be working out, is it more helpful for them to get augmented, um, hours for their contract consultant? Do they want a whole nother consultant that maybe takes a whole big project and, for instance, helps them with their housing elements? So those kinds of things, we have LEAP money to help with that. So, um, there are two required activities that I have to do, um, as part of this money, and these are to promote basically the kinds of pro-housing policies that are goals of the state. And, uh, this, this week, um, I will be going to the board and asking them to, um, adopt the resolution for turning in the application, which is due January thirty-first. So that is the wrap of it, and I will stop sharing and give the, give the seat back to the mayor. Thank you.
Thank you for that report. Um, does anybody have questions? Councilmember Arroyo?
I was so excited. I whacked my computer with my hand going up. Um, so are you?
So, are you, what are you looking for from us tonight? Is it helpful to provide some preferences or ideas that we have? Or would that be better channeled in a different way? I know this is just agendized as a presentation, so.
I would love to get that kind of input right now. And then have you know that after our application is approved, we'll understand more the process that we're going to use. Like, are we going to ask cities for letters of intent? Are we going to have a survey? But I do need to know, you know, if I need a consultant bench, what kind of things should I be looking for? So, it would be helpful.
Okay. Well, Madam Mayor, is that okay if I proceed with some comments now? Or do we need to go to? This doesn't need to go for public comment, right?
We don't generally have public comment in presentations, but I will ask Assistant City Manager Powell. Do we move forward with the public comments on this? After questions, of course.
If the mayor so chooses to ask the folks that are participating through Zoom, you can?
Okay, well, we'll go ahead and ask questions first and then we'll come back. I, you know, I don't think we have a long list of people who are ready to talk about this. But we'll go through the process of questions first. Councilmember Castellano.
I was curious, first, thank you for the report. And I was just curious to understand more of how the regional climate action plan will lead to more housing or how does that relate to housing?
The biggest barrier that the planners have identified is the vehicle miles traveled analysis and the lack of a regional traffic model that has given us a good baseline. So, that, they really want a VMT. But with this money, we can't just ask for VMT. The state, the state wants us to use other money if we're just going to do some VMT work. So, there's that. And then there are the kinds of measures in the climate action plan that are tied to making communities basically more infill, more transportation-friendly. So, those kinds of things that start to link to being able to build build houses. Whereas if you haven't identified it and then haven't had the plan or don't have the right policies in your housing element or your codes don't allow that, then REAP money can help you redo all those plans.
Councilmember Bragel.
Thanks for the report. I'm curious, I thought I heard you mention navigation centers. Did I hear you mention navigation centers? So, talking about those, are you speaking to navigation centers similar to maybe what they have in San Francisco? For transition for houseless folks? Is that the navigation? So, do we have anything locally that is looking like it could move forward in that regard?
Not that I know of. And this is a new concept to me. But I do know that it was a concept that Andrew Whitney at the county, he brought it up in one of the questions to HCD. So, the county seems to be investigating it. And I don't know about sites or anything of that sort. But the REAP eligible uses, they explicitly bring up converting hotels, for example. And trying, trying to, you know, prevent homelessness as also as a way of helping the housing crisis.
So, there's a great one in San Francisco that Council, former Councilmember Mezner and I visited. It might be a good opportunity, once you get to that place, to look into. Thanks so much.
And also, if it's, if it's something your city would want to look into, that ball's really in your court for saying, okay, we might want to know more about navigation centers and whatever level you would want the REAP money to come in. Like, we don't know about it. So, why don't you make a community education campaign? And we'll start having a few workshops. Or I want you to train my housing staff. Or I want you to train elected officials. So, all that kinds of stuff. If you already know those are things you would be interested in, then we, we're going to start carving out the money and making sure we, we remember that.
Any other questions? All right. If there is anybody in the audience who has a comment, I don't think we had anybody call in. Raise your hand. Do you see anything, Pam? I mean.
No, Mayor, I don't.
All righty, thank you. So, we will come back and invite comments from council. Councilmember Royal, would you like to start?
Well, I saw Councilmember Castellano had her hand up earlier, so I just didn't want to run over. Did you, did you have a question?
Go ahead, I'll, I can.
Okay, all right. I jotted down a few thoughts. And I admit that I only looked into this funding source just a tiny bit because it seems to be new and unique. But I have a lot of interest in the city of Eureka in particular in really bridging the gap between, and this was on your list from your other stakeholder input. But really bridging the gap between large commercial property owners that have huge parking lots and underutilized large commercial buildings. And then sort of our city planning staff and prospective third-party developers who might be interested in creative and dramatically different uses of those properties. I know our current zoning code and land use, you know, land use changes that we made may not necessarily accommodate housing at all of the sites that I have in mind. And I don't want to name names of specific properties. But if you can imagine large expansive empty buildings with huge parking lots, those seem to me like an opportunity for incredible housing changes. And, you know, when thinking about toolkits, my only thought was that I personally, in my work, have found toolkits to be sometimes minimally useful for what I need. I often page through them and I'm like, this isn't, if it's not exactly the process that I need to follow, then, then I just sort of pick and choose what may be useful out of it. But I, what I do find incredibly useful is projects that are successful. And then, you know, like actually implemented projects. Having a recap after the project is done about lessons learned. And I would be interested in seeing us pour all of our resources into a handful of high-density housing development efforts and kind of bridging any regulatory gaps and building the political will to, to get them done. In, rather than necessarily focusing a lot of energy on toolkits. But that's what the caveat of, if our planning staff really feel that that would be useful for them, then of course I defer to them because they're really the practitioners. And then the last comment I jotted down in preparation for this was really just sort of a low-hanging fruit opportunity of installing more bike parking that is better, better for securing a bike and bike storage at or near denser housing sites and at key destinations. Because I think, I continue to hear that that's a barrier for folks in choosing method of transportation.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Castellano, did you have some? Yeah.
Sure, yeah. Sorry, I think you were frozen or my computer was frozen or something.
I just thought my internet is unstable. Like I said, I just bought better internet. Sure way to make it not work as well.
Let's see, I think the first question I have is what's your timeline on getting this input? Is it like before your next meeting? Or is it like, yeah, what's the timeline?
There is plenty of time. We will be submitting the application January, at the end of January. But at that point, HCD will start working with us to change anything we need to. And then, in the interim, while they're, before we're even approved, we'll still be developing the program. So, we have the framework and we have the eligible uses from the notice of funding availability. But we still need to customize more from actually each jurisdiction. So, you have at least February and March. And then I have to come back to you with whatever method of communication, you know, where you check the box or sign on the dotted line or whatever. So, we aren't, we're only rushed in the sense that all this money has to be spent but by the early winter 2023.
Okay, great. And then, thank you. And then in terms of comments, I mean, it's funny. I, I think that in some ways with the city of Eureka's housing element, we're fairly well situated for supporting infill. And, you know, some of the measures that maybe other communities are struggling with more. If I'm wrong on that, someone let me know. But that's my perception, you know, especially with our, our work around the parking lots and things like that. So, I'm not sure how useful that would be to us in particular. I also have an interest in some of these commercial properties becoming just better utilized and, yeah, potential mixed uses. I'm also interested in basically low-income housing that's owned by the residents of the properties, where they can build equity through home ownership that can then lead to, you know, them being able to have opportunities to buy houses and things like that. And then one of the things I wonder about or have seen is just that sometimes the tax credit financing, the competitive nature of that can actually, that seems to be, you know, some of the slowness in the housing that we can implement is that, you know, only so many projects can be successful in each round of that competitive process. So, I don't, you know, I don't know if there's ways for finding out like how to make us more competitive. Or, you know, sometimes that's about like leveraging funds and other ways. But I think that that could be a benefit both in Eureka and regionally.
Great.
Go ahead, Nuna.
Okay, thank you. Very quickly, so Councilmember Castellano, the competitive thing does, to me, delve into other requests of HCD to help jurisdictions make the connections to grant funding and, and how to maximize different pots of funding that you can put towards one thing. So, that definitely is on the chalkboard. And then, very quickly, Councilmember Royal, the toolkit's response was not so much what we are going to use our local money for, but it was the state technical assistance team who are, it's just one of the parts of their, their program. But I, I don't, we won't lose any money making, making toolkits.
You want another comment, Nellie? Or Councilmember?
Just one more. I just wanted to comment on the, one more thing that I forgot was pertaining to the eligible activities. I know we've really done a fantastic job with our regional housing needs assessment and just, you know, figuring out where housing can go. And that was a challenging process for us. But I realize it is now done, at least for the time being. But thinking about this development of an improved methodology, the distribution of that housing in the future is, is still interesting to me. And I think, I think some of our staff didn't love this comment during the HCOG process of the RENA, identifying RENA numbers last time. Because I, even though I realized that it is really hard for Eureka to meet our RENA numbers already, I think that based on the resources that are available within Humboldt County for other services that people need when they, when they are housed people in a community, that it makes sense to have a concentration in Eureka that is a bit on the higher side. So, some of the housing is just so dispersed throughout the county and areas where, you know, likely it will be a strain on sheriff and police and fire resources and the environment and, you know, stormwater planning. I mean, maybe there's sort of native surface runoff areas abound. But my concern is that, you know, really housing needs to go in places that have the, the resources to support people. And so, I'd be interested in continuing to explore how that's allocated and how, let's say, you know, the county could work together with cities to improve density there and, you know, not just continue building out and out and out into the exurbs. Because I don't think that that's sustainable in the long term for Humboldt County. So, that's sort of a, a big value statement and something that I think people need to really come together and talk about. But if this funding could help facilitate that process, to me, that also has a lot of value for us in the, in the really long term. I'm not saying that we need to be forced to build all the housing for the whole county here in Eureka. But I do think we need to find that balance a little bit more.
I saw Councilmember Castellano had her hand up.
This has been spoken to a little bit already. But I do think that the work around aging housing stock is beneficial for Eureka. That's something that comes up quite a bit. As well as like large, and this kind of overlaps with the kind of commercial properties with parking lots. But also, we have commercial properties that are currently, you know, in kind of significant places in the Old Town Downtown area that could become housing or mixed use but need such major improvements due to, you know, earthquake retrofit situations like that. But the improvements are often greater than like the value of the property, basically. You know, so basically, they just sit there empty. So, that's something that, you know, if this could be utilized to kind of find resources for addressing those types of buildings, I think it would make a huge difference in some of these vacant spaces in Eureka.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything? All right, Una, any last words or thoughts?
Thank you for the time and for the input. If there are things that we can, that, that we know we can't do yet, that we're in the learning stage, then I will develop the REAP money to increase our expertise and find out how can we apply that in our communities.
So, well, I'm really glad you were able to come today. I knew council would appreciate and figure out how to make best use of these funds. So, thank you for sharing.
Can I ask, can we have that presentation sent to us? Could you maybe send us the PDF? There was a few slides I wanted to dig more into there.
Absolutely, your city manager has it.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Have a great night.
You too. All right. And that ends our presentation portion of the evening. And we are moving on to the public comment period. And so, tonight, do we have anybody in mind for public comment?
Mayor, we did not have anyone register for public comment on items not on the agenda.
Thank you very much. Then we'll move on to the consent calendar. Does anybody want to pull anything from the consent calendar? All right, do I have a motion to approve it?
I'll move approval of the consent calendar.
Thank you.
One second.
Okay, thank you. Can we take a roll call vote, please?
Yes. Councilmember Castellano.
Hi.
Councilmember Moulton.
Hi.
Councilmember Arroyo.
Hi.
Councilmember Bauer.
Hi.
Hi.
Councilmember Bergel.
Yes.
Unanimous yes vote, motion carries.
Excellent. So now we are going to, we've taken item C1 off of the agenda. So we're going to move on to item D1, report and action items. And this one is the Humboldt Area Center for Harm Reduction Operations Plan. Can we have a presentation? City Manager Slattery. Your mute's on.
I was busy looking at my agenda, I apologize. Good evening, Mayor and council members. At the last council meeting, council-directed staff, well, first of all, they approved an amendment to our emergency pandemic resolution allowing for the operation of mobile SEPs in city limits. Guidelines were approved during that meeting. And so it set up the ability for agencies to submit operation plans to the city for approval by city council. We received an operations plan from the Humboldt Center Area for Harm Reduction, Hatcher. Staff has reviewed that plan and deemed that the operation itself meets those guidelines. There were proposed locations within that plan. There were a total of four locations that were proposed. Staff determined that two of those four locations were not meeting the guidelines of the resolution that was passed, both the Hillthicker gravel lot as well as the location that's adjacent to HWMA. Both of those were not in compliance due to the fact that they were too, in close proximity to environmentally sensitive habitat areas. And so staff did reach out to the executive director, LaSara Allen. They were told the reasons for those not being in compliance. And we had discussions about what, an alternative location. One location that was discussed was the north end of the Bay Shore Mall parking lot. The city owns that parcel there and it would also meet the guidelines. So I believe that Hatcher would like to include that in lieu of those other two as a part of this proposal. They also requested that they, that Hatcher had the ability to add more sites or change sites out as needed. I would think that that would be something that council would need to weigh in on. As of right now, you know, we're coming to council for the approval of those locations. And so it would be good to get direction from council as to how they'd want to proceed on cases like that. That's all I have, but LaSara is here to provide a brief presentation about the operations plan. And so I'll send it over to LaSara.
Thank you, Miles. Good evening, all. I will assume that y'all have read the proposal, but I will read it for the record. I will also say that we, in conversation, Miles and I did come to a conclusion that does change those locations and we are excited for the location as proposed. I want to add that, to clarify rather, that the ability to add more sites or change sites out as needed, I would assume we would come to you to get approval. I just don't want to feel like if a location isn't serving our population that we need to stick with that location. I would want to be able to, of course, come back and talk to you about where we could alternate a location possibly. But I will read the proposal as it stands. Hatcher proposes to serve our population and program participants via mobile outreach in the City of Eureka in accordance with the Emergency Resolution Amendment voted into effect 1/5/2021. We will provide mobile access to syringe services and will include as many auxiliary and supportive services as possible, including access to overdose prevention, food hygiene, safer sex supplies, fentanyl test kits, and more as is possible. So the locations are amended to the mall parking lot north end in the city-owned lot under Samoa Bridge and adjacent to Fremell. And then if sites end up needing to be changed later, we can come to an agreement around that, I would hope. Spatial restrictions, we will abide by the spatial restrictions, even though they're more restrictive than the state of California requires. Hours of operation are as listed on our website and in the proposal. Personnel, two SEP technicians will be present on any outreach effort. Both will monitor conduct of participants and de-escalate any conflict that may arise and protect Hatcher participants and employees from concerned community members. Both will retrieve any syringe litter found in the vicinity of any mobile location. One-to-one exchange, Hatcher will abide by one-to-one exchange rate with the understanding that this is implemented for the purpose of optics and community relations, since there is no scientific proof that this measure reduces syringe litter. Further, we are categorically opposed to such restrictive measures as they do not, are not based on harm reduction best practices, the recommendations of the CDC, or recommendations offered by the CDPH Office of AIDS. We especially abort this requirement in a pandemic, which is causing vast access issues for our program participants. This policy further requires people to violate the COVID-19-related stay-at-home order in an effort to get access. Credit cap, Hatcher will abide by the credit cap of 100 syringes being retrieved off credit at any one time, though we categorically oppose said cap as it is not based on harm reduction best practices and is likely to have the effect of decreasing the amount of used syringes our program participants collect and turn in. This policy further requires people to violate the COVID-19-related stay-at-home order in an effort to get access. Finally, know that we believe that this, the result of this amendment will be an increase in potential COVID-19 exposures, HIV/HEPC and syphilis transmission, and other injury and disease related to reuse and sharing of syringes such as abscesses, MRSA, and other staph infections, all of which may also lead to sepsis. This amendment will increase the load on local emergency medical systems in the midst of the COVID-19 pandemic. Hatcher will abide by the parameters of the Emergency Resolution Amendment voted into effect by city council on 1/5/21 under duress, as this amendment is not based in science nor the recommendations of the CDC or CDPH Office of AIDS and does not take into account the needs of our service population. I want to make a statement about why we did write in our dissent throughout the document and that there are two reasons for that. One is this is a precedent-setting document and we felt that it would be important that our reasons for dissent were noted. I didn't want it to be a cover letter because I felt like that could be separated from the document and I wanted the document to reflect our stand on the science. And secondly, I did consult with folks in harm reduction and this is precedent-setting, not just locally, but across the state. So felt it was important to log our concerns.
Thank you for that. And I will go ahead and ask council and then if they, oh, was somebody saying something?
Miles, sorry, I forgot to mention. If council moves forward with this and approves of the three amended sites, I just forgot to mention that obviously your guys' approval of those would allow for, you know, me to write a letter saying that the city-owned sites are approved. However, the other third site will still require a written letter of approval from the property owner in order for that site to be approved eventually. Just wanted to.
Understood.
And that was all written into the resolution. So does anybody have questions about the plan as proposed? Councilmember Moulton and then Councilmember Bauer.
I get some clarification on the credit cap. The way that it sounds in this proposal is different from I was, how I was understanding it. So if someone turns, my understanding is that we were limiting the number of credits someone could accrue by turning in syringes. Now, what I'm hearing is more like there, it's a limit on how many they can accept against their credit at one time, which is it or is it neither?
So the way that we have it written into our resolution, it reads, "SEPs must operate on a one-for-one needle exchange per visit with a credit accrual set at a maximum of 100 needles."
So that to me sounds like the maximum credit they can accrue and it has nothing to do with how many syringes they can exchange at once. So if someone had brought in 500, they'd get and took out 500, okay? Or if they brought in 500 and took 100, then they could only get 100 credit from that, not the remaining 400. Am I understanding it correctly?
You are understanding correctly. If somebody brought in 1,000, they could get 1,000 at that one time.
So in this proposal, it sounds like their understanding is that it's a limit on the number they can get on credit rather than how many credits they can accrue. Is that, does the disconnect make sense?
I personally don't read it that way, but maybe Executive Director Allen would like to clarify if that's their understanding.
I can absolutely reply. I think that we have the same understanding. We have existing credits from previous exchanges that we are going to have to scrap out and zero out or bring down to zero, which is also a problem. As you mentioned, Councilmember Moulton, last time you were talking about the folks who come in for other people, for example, and might accrue credit that way. And those credits will be wiped out by this decision. So, yeah, we are under the, under the clear understanding that we will not be able to allow people to accrue more than 100 credits at a time.
Okay, but at the same time, it doesn't limit how many they can exchange. But I have a couple other questions. If that's clear, can I go ahead?
Go ahead, Kay.
You mentioned, it mentions in the proposal cleaning specifically syringe litter. I don't have the text of the ordinance in front of me, but I understand that the cleaning out, wasn't the cleaning part of it a little more broad? Like cleaning up the general area or the results of the activity, not necessarily just specifically syringe litter?
Either City Manager Slattery or Executive Director Allen, either one of you want to answer that?
I can tell you what's in the resolution. At each mobile location during the hours of operation, SEPs must provide a staff member trained in de-escalation to monitor the location and surrounding area to deter and address inappropriate or illegal activities and an additional staff member to provide needle litter removal services at the location and surrounding area.
Okay, my mistake, it was limited to needle litter. And then the other question I had was, when you say to change out locations or to add sites, to change out locations, meaning like on Wednesday, you say you're going to go to this one approved site, but it's not working out, so you'd like to rather on Wednesdays go to another approved site? Is that how change out locations would work?
My understanding, oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, I can respond to that, yeah. Our concern is we don't want to be stuck with sites that aren't working for our population. We will, of course, come back to the meeting and get approval if we are going to switch out sites, but I don't want to be perpetually stuck with sites that aren't working for our population.
And we don't want to be perpetually considering and approving sites. So, okay, so I understand that, I got it now, thank you.
Did you have anything to add to that, City Manager Slattery?
No, my understanding was the same as Director Allen's, that it was more the physical location, not necessarily the days moving around.
Thank you very much. And was that it for you, Councilmember Moulton?
Yes, thank you.
All right, Councilmember Bauer.
No, maybe my question more is, we're going to have public comment next and then we're going to have more discussion afterwards.
Yeah, so this is questions now and then comments after. You want to wait for comments?
Yeah.
All right, Councilmember Bergel.
So just a point of clarification, when we talk about, I'm glad you brought up the litter. When we talk about syringe litter, it seems to me that that would include syringes, caps, blue water containers, alcohol prep pads, cookers, all of the things that are related to syringe use. Is that the understanding of both parties, LaSara and Miles?
I'll let you go ahead and go first, Executive Director Allen, and then City Manager Slattery after.
As it was stated in the amendment, those items were not included, but none of us would leave any of those behind if we were cleaning up a location. I can say that with certainty, that if we were cleaning up a location after we had done services there. Now also though, people will not be using in the sites that we are doing services in because we will be ensuring also that that is not happening. So there hopefully won't be a lot of that other detritus to pick up. However, if the amendment wants to be increased to include all garbage pickup, that should probably be written into the amendment.
So, yeah, when, I believe, and I'd have to double-check the two versions, I don't have them in front of me, but I believe the initial one did say litter in general and that it was changed at the council meeting to needle litter. But the existing resolution does specify needle litter.
Okay, yeah, I just, you know, I realize, and I've, I actually talked to Jessica about this in the past, that picking up syringes, of course, is critical. But when you're leaving behind, you know, like for instance, today I was out taking a walk at Palco Marsh and I saw, you know, several caps out there. And when you leave the caps, people think of syringes. So as long as the paraphernalia is out there, there's that, there's that connection to, to the idea that, you know, that was, of course, a syringe. So I would be.
We're maybe not wearing questions now, so you can hold on to that.
Oh, I will, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Castellano.
I'm curious, Director Allen, if you'd be amenable to adding on to your proposal, syringe and related, you know, litter and litter-related, to related items or something like that, just.
I don't have a problem with that.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? All right, so seeing none, I will open it up for, for public comment at this time about the item. And so I want to be clear that the item on the agenda is approving the plan. And city council has made decisions about having SCPs in general. We've made decisions about the resolution and those aren't the things we're discussing right now. Really, it's about how this plan meets the approved needs of the resolution. So I just want people to be mindful that we stick to that specific topic because this is a topic-related comment. And if not, I will, I will probably remind you that we need to stay on topic. So with that, I will ask, do we have any public comment?
Mayor, we do. Our first speaker is Dr. Ann Lindsay.
Good evening. I'm a former Humboldt County Public Health Officer and a family practitioner in the community. And I have worked with Hatcher as part of the Harm Reduction Coalition and I really value their work. So I urge you to approve the resolution concerning the Hatcher operational plan so they can resume their service to vulnerable people in our community. And it's very important for you to value facts, evidence, and experts when you get to the point of crafting your ordinance and rather than creating an ordinance based on fear. And I think that, I'm heartened that you're working with the Hatcher leadership now and I hope that you can continue to have a productive relationship and also rely on the experts from the California Department of Public Health. And just incidentally, people concerned about syringe litter can join Hatcher. They're having a community cleanup on January 30th from 11:00 to 2:00 and they say, wear a mask or bring gloves and they'll provide other help for cleaning the community. So I think that's a really positive effort by Hatcher. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Gary Lewis.
Hello. I want to say something a little more personal this evening. For most of my career, I've been a performing artist. You step onto a stage, clear your mind of all preconceptions, and embrace a level of uncertainty, knowing that holding rigidly to a preconceived notion of how things will go leads to mediocrity, while opening oneself up to a degree of uncertainty and change offers the best experience for everyone.
Mr. Lewis, I need to ask you to keep it to the plan specifically?
I'm getting to the plan. Thank you very much. Believe me. Okay. Um, you're all gathered here tonight on a virtual stage, and each of you will step forward and have the option to open yourself up to a level of change and uncertainty here, or tighten up and take the seemingly safe conservative path of sticking with the familiar, even if you know it will lead to mediocrity. Tonight, the city has the opportunity to take control of needle exchange operations, something it has repeatedly said it wants to do. Yes, it requires a bit of courage and faith, faith in those who stand next to you on this virtual stage. Do you have the courage to stand up and do something that feels a little bit risky, knowing the results will improve the lives of everyone in the community? Frankly, if you're only capable of taking the easy conservative route of repeating what we have all endured for the past four years, you may as well go home now. It's a simple choice, the conservative option for more of the same, including more five-hour meetings, or the progressive option for change and a better future. We all know the phrase, nothing ventured, nothing gained. Act with confidence, and we can gain a better future for Eureka tonight. Act out of fear, and we remain mired in the past. You have a good audience out there tonight. Please step forward and embrace a bit of uncertainty and change for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. I know uh people have a lot to say about this topic still, but I really want to, um, I, it's hard, but I want you to stay focused on the actual plan, because we've made the decisions about the resolution, and tonight's decision is strictly about if the plan is, matches that resolution. Um, thank you. Next.
Speaker three is Amy Lieberman.
Hello, my name is Amy Lieberman, and I am a public health harm reduction attorney. Um, I'm here to support Hatcher's proposal and urge you to vote yes. Um, I was here two, two, three weeks ago when um you voted on the resolution, and I know how much time and effort and thought went into that resolution. And what was neat from what I've seen from other city councils is that you actually had um stakeholders involved in that. And um while you didn't take all of Hatcher's suggestions, um their input was heard, and um, and you should feel confident in their proposal since it is exactly what um your resolution was asking for. Um, I do want to briefly say that I feel it's legally important that Hatcher included their dissenting language in their proposal, because it sets, make sure that their um uh objections are out there to set a precedent for when you are drafting your final ordinance, um during which I suggest, as Dr. Lindsay stated earlier, that you consult with public health and medical experts and draft that ordinance out of facts and not fear. Um, so again, I urge you to approve Hatcher and any other safe syringe access proposals that are put before your board. I know that you're aware of how important these programs are in saving people's lives and making the community safer, and um your community appreciates your time, thought, and consideration.
Thank you.
The next speak, speaker number four is Sarah Kerr.
Um, Mr. Lewis, can you turn your mute on, please?
Sorry.
Gary's laughing at me. So, uh, good evening, Council. My name is Sarah Kerr. I'm a forty-year Humboldt County resident, as well as a founding and current board member with Humboldt Area Center for Harm Reduction. Thank you for reviewing Hatcher's operations plan. I ask that you vote to approve this plan tonight and affirm your support of life-saving and harm-reducing syringe services in Eureka. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Speaker number five is Lasara Allen. Did you wish to speak on this, Lasara? Sorry, I know you.
No, I was trying to get on the, um, for the other item. No worries. Thank you.
Speaker number six is Jessica Smith.
Sorry, couldn't find my unmute button there. Um, thanks so much, y'all. Just keep this brief. You, most of you know me for the new council members I didn't mention last time, but um I am the new uh Hatcher Board Chair, also former Executive Director. So clearly, I am here to um ask that you pass the plan that Hatcher has proposed this evening. Um, I appreciate y'all getting it on the agenda so quickly. Um, and I do believe that it aligns with all of the requirements that you asked for in the um emergency resolution amendment. Um, again, I will sort of state that uh the resolution itself is a precedent-setting thing that Hatcher does not necessarily agree with, but we do understand the need for these services, and the participants certainly need the services. So um do appreciate you considering this tonight and ask that you vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Speaker number seven is Jasmine Guer.
Hello, um, I'm Jasmine, the Syringe Service Program Coordinator at Hatcher. I'm speaking tonight to urge the council to vote yes on Hatcher's proposal to operate mobile uh syringe services at the approved sites. Uh, aside from those two locations that were already denied, um, which I, I totally understand it didn't meet the guidelines, um, I do urge you to vote yes on the approved of, or pending approval locations, which is under the Samoa Bridge, and also um on A Street around the corner from Free Meal, which I understand also needs permissions. Um, I feel really confident about the location underneath the Samoa Bridge, because I think it'll be really vital for our population. Um, I know that on Tuesdays before the resolution, um, most of the people that um traveled up to Hatcher um when we were still allowed to do services in Eureka um were coming from Aha. Um, so that population um overlaps quite a bit. Um, and I also just want to note that um all Hatcher staff members are um really eager to serve our population again in the city of Eureka. And um we have already witnessed the negative effects that this resolution has had on our population. Um, the urgency of passing this proposal is a lot more severe than last time we all met. Um, it's assumed that even more people are reusing and sharing syringes. Um, and I just think that approving this proposal is um a very much needed damage control at this point. Um, and yeah, I think that there's already a crisis that is um potentially underway already. Um, so I just think it's important to just allow us to do services as soon as possible.
Thank you.
Speaker number eight is Jacey Spies.
Hey, um, good evening. Would, would you guys be okay with me um sharing my screen? I'd like to share some photos I want to talk about with the proposed location.
No, we're not gonna share screen, sorry.
Okay, sure. I'll email the photos to you then.
That'd be helpful.
Great. Um, so I wanted to talk about the area under um Samoa Bridge. This is actually a regular trash cleanup site for Pack Out Green Team. We go there pretty consistently. Um, just about two blocks north, which was one of the images I would have liked to have shared on the, it's the map. About two blocks north, there's a marshy area. Um, and last time we went there, December nineteenth of twenty twenty, we pulled out twenty hundred pounds of garbage and forty-five syringes in just about forty-five minutes. Um, it is a catastrophic biohazard just right up the street from where Hatcher is proposing to continue to have, or have this mobile SEP operation. Um, so I would like, while we're, while we're talking about being specific, I would like the city council to consider being specific about what the vicinity is that Hatcher volunteers are gonna be cleaning up trash around. Um, is it ten feet from their location? Is it gonna extend to this area where the users are actually going um and dropping the litter? Because as I understand it, they aren't going to be um using in the parking lot, in the gravel lot, where they're being given these um needles. Um, this is, I, I, I can't really, a picture is like a thousand words. I can't really describe to you how horrific it was. Um, the needles are floating in the water. There's human excrement. There's waste everywhere. I have a hard time believing that Hatcher volunteers are gonna be going into this, this disaster to clean up after themselves. Um, so I would just really like to encourage the Eureka City Council members to be specific in the language. Um, I want to say I really appreciate that you have um reconsidered the areas on, like Hillfiker gravel parking lot. We were already really worried about that one, because it's a beautiful area. Um, and uh I also would like to say thank you for being specific about asking them to pick up litter, not just syringes. And with that, I think that is all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Speaker number nine is uh Chris. Um, I forgot your last name, Chris. Thank you.
No worries. Thank you. Um, I just also want to reiterate uh how vulnerable the spot, the Samoa Bridge area is, basically just going off of what uh Ms. Spies just said. I'd also like to see some clarity as far as what we're talking about with um, basically who watches the watchmen? Are they providing their own data and watching out for themselves? Or who's making sure there's a one-for-one exchange, as well as who's making sure that they're cleaning up the area? I, that, are we just going off of what Hatcher says and being like, okay, we agree with you because you said so? Or is this gonna be a third party that is uh maybe an unbiased in it, arguably? Also, uh, as Spies said, I would like a little bit more clarity in the vicinity and the definition thereof. Uh, how far are we talking spread out? Because these things aren't usually just, uh, people don't usually just pick up a needle, use it right there, drop it, or take it back. They travel off usually over into their bushes or wherever the camps may be. And I would also just like some clarification on that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Speaker number ten is uh Jessica Galavick.
Thank you. Um, my name is Jessica Galavice. I've lived in Eureka for about sixteen years. Um, I'm here to urge the city council to consider the physical impact on the most marginalized as opposed to the impact on a hiker seeing a cap on the ground. Um, we're in the middle of a health crisis and a pandemic, and this is not the time to be cutting off services. I myself um speak from experience of being homeless and relying on services that were provided by my community. Um, I urge you to remember our community. I'm sorry.
It's just keeping it to the plan specifically. Oh.
Right. My next statement is, I urge you to support our community by supporting Hatcher in this current proposal and into the future as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Speaker number eleven is Judy Souza.
Good evening. I'm not certain why this is precedent-setting, as there are other one-to-one exchanges in California. There is a Business and Professions Code, Section forty-one forty-seven, which specifically addresses needle litter being left in parks and on beaches. There are environmental laws regarding litter and waste, and all of those must be considered as well when considering a mobile exchange. And here again, Hatcher's site falls short, focusing solely on what is inside of the bubble and refusing to acknowledge anything else. Doing the same thing, trusting Hatcher to adhere to rules and expecting that they will without third-party oversight is crazy-making. It is also noteworthy that with two SSPs in the county, it has not lowered the hepatitis C rate. If clean needles are what prevents new Hep C cases, shouldn't our numbers be lower?
We're keeping this to the plan, please, not to.
We need to find the why behind what makes these numbers so high. People deserve better. The county SEP has stepped in to do this. I do not believe it is in the best interest of anyone or anything to approve Hatcher for emergency or any syringe services in Eureka. I hope you will reject their proposal and continue to search for a more compatible program or build your own, which serves all.
Thank you.
Speaker number twelve is A. Collins.
Hi there. Uh, my name is A., and I urge you to approve Hatcher's proposal. Thank you.
Speaker number thirteen is Janelle Egger.
Janelle, are you there? Sorry, couldn't find mute. Um, I want to um ask you to approve this plan, and thank you all for working through this very difficult issue. Um, I do want to say that I am hoping that it is an interim measure, and um, and I'm curious as to the timeline for the ordinance. Again, please approve this. Thank you.
Speaker number fourteen, sorry, speaker number fourteen, Nezzy Wade.
Nezzy, are you there? I don't see Nezzy here.
Yeah.
You don't see her? Okay, we'll move on. And if she comes in, she probably expected it to be a little bit later.
Yeah. Uh, speaker number fifteen, Jay Reader. All right, speaker number sixteen uh is Anita Ramirez.
Hi, I'm an intern at Hatcher. Um, I just want to ask that you vote yes on this proposal. It'll really help Eureka out. And I didn't really have anything planned, but thanks for working with Lasara, uh, my executive director. Thank you for working with Hatcher. It's really helped us out. Am I trying to figure out how can we move forward? Uh, well, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, that's all of our registered um speakers tonight.
Thank you very much, and thank you guys for adhering to uh, to this tighter protocol. Um, I think we got the gist of what everybody was trying to say. Um, and I will bring it back to the council for comments, or motions. Looks like Councilmember Braggel.
I guess I'll start. I'll just jump right in. Um, so I just want to address the few things. Um, first of all, something that I feel like we've heard a lot in the last, I can't tell you how many hours we've been discussing this, is facts, not fear. And I agree. And the facts, however, are um coming from agencies that support uh what you're doing. I have Hep C numbers here in front of me that have, Hep C has increased in our region since two thousand fifteen, probably before that. And um so I'm, I'm curious how that all um meshes together. Um, so you know, I, this business of um of fear and coming to meetings and saying, oh my God, if you don't do this, you're gonna kill people. You're a murderer. All of these things that have been said in the most recent past, um, you know, sorry, don't buy it. Um, I also want to speak for a moment about collaboration. And to me, collaboration is when people are willing to work together. And so um when, when we are working as an entity, we do that in a professional way. And what I would say is saying that um, you know, all cops are bastards, and you know, this is all about your ego. People will die because of your ego. All of these different things that are being put out there into the community are not collaboration. They're collaboration in the meeting because it looks really good, but on the outside, what I'm hearing from the public is a completely different thing. So I'm, I'm not a fan. Um, the other thing that I will say is um, I was sad or disappointed that Jacey couldn't post those pictures, because I too was just at a cleanup myself where they pulled out three-quarters full bucket. It was a five-gallon bucket, three-quarters full of syringes. That's just syringes. That's not all the blues, the, the smokers, the, um, all of the things that go with that. Um, yeah, I, I do not support this plan. I think that um as a city, we can do better with partnerships. Um, this isn't, this proposal that they put out, you know, under duress. This proposal that they put out, you know, under duress, no one should ever have to make a decision under duress. In fact, I'm not really supportive of that piece as well. And just continually, I hear what you're saying that this is all about, this is all about, you know, not setting precedent. Well, fine, but if you want to work together and collaborate, then you don't pick every little thing apart. We're not 16 years old in high school. We are grownups. And this is not a way to do business. So I'm sure I have a lot more to say. I'm also just, I'm even just curious. I mean, do you have, is there insurance that's going to cover this for you? That's my other question. But it really doesn't matter to me because I don't support moving forward with this until the ordinance is passed. I think that, once again, the attitude is that we are entitled and we will do what we want and get what we want. And that ship has sailed, at least for me. So those are my comments. And I am not in favor. The other thing I did want to say is that I did have someone bring forward a proposal, though, to me, that potentially a partnership in the city. And many of the things in that proposal, I'll send it to council, but many of the things in that proposal really spoke to me. One of the main things that spoke to me was that we would, let me just look here, does not require continual oversight from the city because the city would be a partner in the thing. We'd have a lot more control over the amount of syringes. It's a whole page. But this was brought forward by a group of people. And I would like to see us move in that direction with somebody who's more reputable and who is willing to work professionally with us. When I hear esteemed colleagues and then I hear what's going on outside of the meeting, they don't match. It's ingenuous. So again, I think I've said it four times now, but I do not support this. I think we need to wait. County's doing a great job.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments? Councilmember Bauer and then Councilmember Arroyo.
Thank you. Yeah, you know, I have a lot to say and I'm sure we're going to be discussing this for a little bit. But, you know, first and foremost, I just, I'm disappointed in an operations plan that's really full of commentary. And we heard, you know, that this is precedent setting. Well, I think we've had plenty of discussion about the need for SEPs. We've been through all this and to fill a document, an operations plan, with commentary was super disappointing to me. There's things in here like, you know, concerned community members in quotes. And I kind of took that like it's not genuine that there are concerned community members. I see things like, you know, optics in quotes. Well, you know, there's a lot of members besides those being served that would take offense to optics. They see the impacts. They see the needles on the streets. So that kind of strikes a chord with me that optics to whom? Our community? Our community is, you know, 20,000 plus people. That a lot feel differently about this. And so, you know, I'm just disappointed with this whole document. There's just way too much commentary. And to say that, to include it because of precedent and the dissent reflects the science is, I don't know about that. In the last paragraph or second to last paragraph, it says, know that we believe that the result of this amendment will, you know, increase COVID-19 transmission, all these things. We believe, you know, is that a statement of fact? And it's followed by this amendment at the very end, will increase the load on local emergency medical systems. That's stating that that is a fact. So it's kind of all over the place. And we talk about science and we talk about facts. We talk about fear. You know, that we're all afraid to make this tough decision or something to that effect. And then I think Councilmember Bragel was saying, talking about fear. And we're being told that to fear all these things, that this decision is going to lead to all these horrible things. Well, it's a tough decision. And we're already making a bold decision by allowing this activity, right? Because we know it's an important thing for the community, this exchange. But I think it's our right as a community, as a city council, to have some oversight. And in fact, you know, to have some control over this operation because it's a significant and serious activity, right? Putting needles out in the community, that's a serious thing. And I believe this city council and this community has a right to maintain control over that. And really, I think it's a government health issue, right? And governments should run these things. So I have a hard time being told to, that horrible things are going to happen if we, you know, if we don't do this and, you know, it is being done in the county. It's disappointing all around. And I know we're going to talk about this more and talk about locations. I heard from people saying, you know, birders, all these people that go underneath the bridge to explore our nature, our natural environment are concerned about. You know, a lot of them told me they're afraid to go there. And that this would be another reason to not go there. So there's a lot, and I'm sure others on the council here will want to talk about it. So I'll leave it at that, but I probably will have some more to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Arroyo.
Well, thank you, everyone who came to speak. This is just, it almost seems like this topic will never, never not be on the agenda. But obviously, this is an important thing to decide about. And I want to keep in the forefront of my mind and of our conversation that this is a short-term proposal for emergency services during a pandemic. So there are things I don't love about it. And there are things I don't love about a resolution. But I am generally in favor of continuing to provide some form of services in a way that we can compromise about. All of us are compromising to come up with something we can all potentially stomach. I hear there's some disagreement about that, which is fine. That's why we're here to discuss it. But I'm focused on the, you know, the the actual, the meat of this, which is just a few lines about how the operations will work. And I understand why additional comments were added. But I do wish that there was a little less editorializing and more focus on just the emergency operations plan. But that is, that is the right of this organization to add that if they wish. And, you know, I think when it comes to the outside of the meeting comments and basically putting us in the city on blast, I do want to say that we frequently work with people who put us on blast in their personal lives and in their personal time. I'm not going to go through and name stakeholders in the community, some of whom serve on our city, you know, advisory bodies who, or are consultants to the city who put us on blast. So we are, you know, we are a small community where people have their city relationship role. And then they also have their independent personal views. And as much as it's exhausting and difficult to sometimes hear that and turn around and know that someone has just said something you really wish they hadn't said about you and then work together with them, it happens all the time. So, yeah, this isn't, it's not my favorite. But, you know, I think that's part of having a thick skin and being in a decision-making role is people might privately disagree with you and they might publicly disagree with you as an individual. But ultimately, we do end up working together on things. So I just wanted to note that. That said, it would be great if we can turn to, you know, more collaborative approaches whenever possible. One thing I like about this proposal is the paired services with the shower caravan at the site where they're under this moed bridge. I think that's a great opportunity. I know there are a lot of supporters of Hatcher that also help volunteer at the shower caravan, who I think will end up being additional eyes nears. And so anytime, while that's not their requirement of their program, I imagine there could be some additional support there. And it makes me realize that the shower caravan also goes to Arcata, but on a different day than Hatcher outreach services go to Arcata. So I don't know if there's an opportunity for more syncing up, but it seems like certainly an opportunity for that site in Eureka. Just a couple of their notes, just based on things I heard and having done some thinking. This isn't exactly related to the plan that's proposed today, but I just hear over and over again concern about the, it is related to what public commenter said. I hear concern about the integrity of reporting. And I wanted to note that, you know, one program that the state of California offers, and I don't know exactly how it works because it's somewhat new to me in my research, is health program audits and trained health program auditors who provide feedback to health facilities, health maintenance organizations, hospitals, et cetera, and individuals that are subject to state and federal laws and provide feedback and audits of programs that go through and, you know, publish an independent audit that is outlining where there are opportunities for improvement. And so perhaps if that's not already something that's done, that could be considered to, as we move forward with continuing to work together, you know, to see if there's an opportunity for increased confidence in the organization. So it's just a possibility to explore. And lastly, I wanted to note that I'm sure there'll be more conversation, but I just wanted to thank all the HSU students who participate in this process. I honestly can say that even though I have the fortune of teaching at HSU, I, there's not as much HSU engagement in the city of Eureka as I would love to see. And that's an area where I'd really like to see improvement. But on this issue, there's so much engagement from HSU students, many of whom are interns at Hatcher and are involved in social work programs at HSU. Interns are volunteers in various capacities. So while we might not agree about how to move forward with this issue, I think that's really cool. And I wanted to say thank you for taking an interest in issues in Eureka. And this big issue that is often not very fun. So way to go getting engaged in the community in that way. I'll save the rest of my comments till others have had a chance to go.
So Councilmember Castellana and then Councilmember Maltin Apter.
Great. Let's see. I'm just going to speak to some small details. I do appreciate the Samoa Bridge location as coinciding with AHA. And I would, and kind of related to the ability to change sites, I would be adverse to, I think that the Samoa Bridge site works really well compared with AHA. But I think that on Thursday or Friday, and I don't think you're up on the weekends, but I'm going to say the weekends too, just that usage around that site starts to pick up for other uses. So if it were to change, I wouldn't be supportive of it taking place on those days. But generally, if it's on a city-owned parcel, I would be okay with this, with city staff, the city manager kind of making those decisions in terms of like making slight changes in the schedule. But, you know, I would love to hear, I guess, if council is supportive of that or if they would want it to come back before council for those city-owned sites. I know there's another process for non-city-owned sites. If with the permission of council, I would love to ask Director Allen just a question about what they mean by vicinity when picking up litter, since that question came up. Would that be okay with council if I asked Director Allen?
Director Allen was part of the presentation, so. Executive Director Allen, would you like to answer that?
Yeah, definitely. I, you know, we haven't done this yet. This is not something that we've done yet, so I don't have a number off the top of my head as to how many feet it will be around the location or yards or whatever it might be. I think it's realistic to consider that it will be anything within, you know, eyesight of the space that we're parked in. You know, I don't, I'm not, I wouldn't be, I would be hesitant to say that we would be walking two blocks from each location because that would add hours to our service that we don't necessarily have. So if we are going to be required to do cleanup outside of the vicinity, the local vicinity of the exchange site, then we will have to look at how that would work. But, you know, anything within eyesight of that location, obviously, you know, would be cleaned up.
Okay, so like within like a two-block radius approximately?
No, I mean, I think two blocks is outside of what we would be looking at. I think that if we are located at, say, under the Samoa Bridge location, and Jasmine has been to all of the locations. I have not been to those locations yet. But Jasmine has been to those locations, so she would have a better idea of what exactly it looks like. But let's say within, like if we're at the location, at the vehicle, you know, anything within walking, you know, range of that, you know? I mean, I think it's realistic to think within that lot, right? But again, I haven't been to the location, so I can't say parameters entirely.
Okay. I mean, I think Councilmember Arroyo spoke to some of my thoughts around, you know, just the relationship between editorializing and, you know, our role in council and things like that. You know, I appreciate the concern you have around setting precedent, you know, and also, you know, I do want to support, you know, just advocate for like appreciation for the relationship with the city, you know? And that, you know, we're in an ongoing navigation of what that is. And then, yeah, that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Councilmember Maltin.
Thank you. And thank you, Director Allen, for the presentation. I was glad to hear with so many in public comments saying that you have a team going, that there's a team going out to do a community cleanup. I understand that you've got a lot of supporters and making good use of them to not only clean up the area but elevate public relations. Just sounds super useful to me. I believe that we passed this resolution at the last meeting in response to the public health crisis, which is not going to get better without services. So I would support anything to address that. And since this plan meets the requirements that we've put out, then I would support that. Thanks also for those who mentioned that we are working on an ordinance. Just to reiterate that this is a temporary measure to address an ongoing problem like right now. like right now. And that I feel like that's really important, that we actually do. Uh, and this is the, this is the proposal on the table. This is the group that is ready to address this situation right now. And that's what I think we need. And I look forward to the day. We have a beautiful, comprehensive ordinance in place that um cuts off this need for constant talking about this uh constant addressing and discussion of this topic. Um. Specifically on the approval of sites, um keeping in mind that this is a temporary measure and that we are going to bring up this topic and a lot more and have a lot more in-depth conversations as we craft the ordinance, as we make all of that happen. Uh. It just seems exhausting to me to then have more like minutia come back before council if they want to change sites and it's a site that the city staff can get behind. I would also support letting the staff make the decision as to whether or not adding specific sites to this ongoing, that this plan, if this plan is approved. Um, I would be okay with that.
So um, here is the deal. It is just about eight o'clock. We don't have a motion yet. Everybody's, everybody has more to say, so let's take a quick break. Um, and come back in five minutes. If this was truly the last item, um I would just push through, but I think we have, you know, some council reports and we have a discussion from the city manager report. So five minutes, we'll come back at eight o'clock and we will press forth. See y'all in five. All right. Ready to to come back. Excellent. Okay, so um, we are still in the comment section. Who is, would like to make a a motion or comment some more? Councilmember Bragel.
So I just wanted to make um a point, a a point of clarification. Earlier, when I was speaking to this idea of being put on blast, if you will, um. I agree that there are certain business owners and people in our community that that do put us on blast, and they do it forthrightly. They do it to our face. They do it straight up. And unfortunately, uh my experience with Hatcher these last few months has been um complete two-faced, and I don't really appreciate that. So um, I wanted to read the, um, it's very brief. Uh, the plan that this person brought forward. It's actually a group of people, and I wanted to uh to just give a different perspective. So, um. So let me just get there. So this is an outline for the city to consider take, the city to consider taking over mobile SEP operations in collaboration with the brick-and-mortar SEP run by the county D H H S office. This would be instead of, not in addition to, non-professional SEPs. A less-than-full-time staff member, support staff would be covered by volunteers. Outreach to college and university students in nursing, psychology, and addiction studies for volunteers. Partnering with the county or employing the use of the courtyard, corp yard or options for space storage and parking of a mobile unit, storage container and parking slot. An end-of-life vehicle of the city can be repurposed for this use. The one-paid staffer would be the only one with access to facility keys, badge, et cetera. Initial inventory might be borrowed from the county until grant funding is secured. Locations for exchange to be determined in compliance with city regulations. Follow guidelines recommended by the state by including key services to maintain grant eligibility. Um, apply for grants, and then they have a list of different places to apply for grants. Uh, benefits to having the city-managed syringe exchange. Control over amount of syrines distributed, less syringe litter in the environment and business areas, better communication between the county, city, and recovery agencies, does not require continual oversight from the city, community buy-in due to responsibility-run exchange, less expenditures for removal of needle clogs in plumbing, syringe cleanup in parks, et cetera. We haven't even talked about that. Uh, cleaner community leads to expanded tourism and great resident quality, uh greater integration of recovery services of exchange locations, and we have discussed having a city SEP um to do, to do this two days a week in partnership with the county. Um, that seems to me to be a a workable solution. Um, it's definitely with a um professional entity and one that um that we could work with. So, yeah, I just, I I feel like this is from um from the neighbors in the in the area over there. The neighbors are the people that have to, you know, have been having to deal with this. And the last thing that I wanted to say is I hear that, you know, we don't want to get in the minutia, if this were to pass, which it probably will, um of moving sites. But the thing is, is that those sites are going to impact our different wards and our different neighborhoods. And people need to be aware of that, and it needs to be discussed. Um, even though it seems like a small thing to us, which I believe it is, um, it's a big thing to your neighborhood when your neighborhood is impacted in this way. So um again, I still, I stand by my decision. Um, but I would be interested in looking at how our city can partner through uplift, through CSET, and some of those different ways um that we as a city have been innovative.
Thank you. Councilmember Castellana.
I just have a question, uh, point of clarification for Councilmember Bragel. Um. Would you be okay with sites that are already on the list? Just like changes in schedule related to those being kind of assessed by the city manager or staff, or would you you want like any kind of changes to come back before council?
You're muted.
So my concern would be having approved sites. Um, I've gotten a lot of calls, I don't know about you guys, about under the bridge. Under the bridge makes a lot of sense. Um, but I'm getting calls from people who are down there regularly, riding their bikes with their kids, those types of situations. So I have concerns. Um. Uh, I, if the site was approved and the times were changing, I think that that would be, I mean, that would certainly be something that we wouldn't necessarily have to look at, although in consideration of people's times during holidays and weekends and in the summertime when there are kids out all over the place. You know, I I don't know about under the bridge being the best, the best site. Um, free meal, I know that that's been broached before, and they have been absolutely against it. That may have changed by now. Um, and then looking at the North Forty, you know, we worked really hard to make positive changes down there. Um, and putting something in there, to me, um, it doesn't make sense. I mean, already it's littered with campsites again. Um, do we want that kind of? I don't want that flavor for that region either. Um, so, you know, I I I just, um, I don't know. If it was, if it was a different entity that I felt confident with, I think I would be more inclined to go with those two sites and different times, but this one has proven over and over and over again um that they are, they're just not the one. And I
Oh, you muted yourself at the end.
And it's unfortunate to say that, because I would say that it hasn't always been that way. And that's disappointing.
Any other comments? Councilmember Bauer.
Yeah, I was just gonna say about locations, because I have concern about another location, but um, I imagine that can be discussed um after a motion. Um, but I'll just say I support um Councilmember Bragel. Um. I, I've seen a lot of operations plans in my, my career. Um. And I just can't support um this level of unprofessionalism. I prefer to be run by the city or the county, and the county is doing it currently. But regardless, we we do have to work with people that are challenging all the time, but um commentary on what I thought was kind of over, like we were gonna deal with an operations plan, not um an editorial. Um. Pretty much turned me off. And um, but I'll, I'll leave it to y'all to make a motion and and then we can talk about um locations.
Mayor, if I might.
Uh huh.
Um, I'd just like to make a couple of observations. Uh, first of all, the word precedent has been tossed around a bit. Um. I don't see anything here that establishes a legal precedent, and by that, I mean, uh, I don't see anything here that would prevent the council from changing its mind. Uh, if this operations plan does not play out for the benefit of the community in reality, uh, and I mean all members of the community, so all points of view would weigh in on that, but there's absolutely nothing that binds you uh or binds anybody else to accept this. This is uh well-known to be, among other things, an interim plan. And so one of the suggestions I wanted to make is that in the motion between the parenthetical Hatcher and the word operations, the word interim be added. Um, just to clarify that. And second, if you, if the council does wish to go forward and approve the operations plan, I would suggest that there be a portion of the motion that specifically um disavows the uh opinion uh in commentary sections of the operations plan. And uh if the city is going to approve it, that it be approved without all of that. Um, and uh especially if there's going to be a sign-off by the city, we want to make clear that we're not signing off on some of the on some of the opinions that have been expressed and embedded in the operations plan or attempted to be embedded.
Thank you, City Attorney Black. Uh, Councilmember Bragel and then Arroyo.
Just one quick question. Is is there insurance? Do they have a waiver, a waiver with subrogation um listing us as an additional insured? I mean, I'm just curious, are we protected um as a city if they are to do this distribution?
Or any agreement that the city gets in, which I would consider this a lease, a no-charge lease, any agreement where um agencies are on our property, we have to get those insurance requirements covered. And so after our meeting um with Hatcher and Masar and Jasmine, I forwarded them those requirements, and I have yet to hear back from them, but they're aware of those requirements, and just like Aha has to comply with those requirements. Um, Hatcher will, Hatcher will have to get the waiver of subrogation, because they have employees and Aha doesn't, they're all volunteer-based. But um yes, they have to provide insurance, both liability as well as workman's comp and auto insurance.
And have you seen that yet? You haven't seen that yet.
It would be a part of the approval process if council chooses to go forward.
Thank you.
Councilmember Arroyo. And Kim, you're not on me now? Just, it doesn't matter. I Councilmember Arroyo.
I just wanted to get some clarification. Um, since this item is agendized as um specifically talking about this operations plan, um, I I believe we're not really able to discuss the merits of another operations plan. I mean, I appreciate knowing that it's an option, but is is that correct?
We don't have a proposal in front of us as far as something that's you know, the one that uh Councilmember Bragel read was a, was a, was a, I guess you consider an option. Now, if council wanted to go in that direction, they could direct staff to bring something back. Um, but we couldn't approve anything specific right now.
Of course, yeah. I realize, um, I just, I was not aware that we had any other um interest or proposal ideas. So I I'm just, um, I'd like to get more information about that. Um, and I think, as we have said before, it would be great to have um more exchange hours so that by bringing in needles, people could um have more opportunities to um discard used sharps and to um you know, have more points of contact to connect to services. So that that is in line with what we have said before. Um, and I I'd be interested in in hearing more about that from staff. Um, I just, I felt completely unprepared to receive information about another option, um, because I hadn't heard anything about that before.
City managers, Flattery, is this, uh, do you have any other information about this?
Well, no, I was aware of it in speaking with Councilmember Bragel, as that was provided to her. Um. We haven't, staff hasn't done any research or or any sort of planning. We weren't directed by council to do anything, so there was nothing that was done to explore the op- the option. Um, but you know, just like uplift has been a um social services division within our um city that, you know, I I would say anything's possible, but how long that would take, I I don't know.
I personally have a lot of questions and concerns about us getting into that particular service um providing role, but I I think those could be better discussed and answered when this is on the agenda for, you know, the idea that the city might be um proposing to fill this specific public health role is is new and interesting, but um I'm sure a lot of people would have thoughts about that. Um, anyway, I I appreciated the city attorney's comments around an interim plan and um, from everything I saw in the resolution and every every way we've discussed this emergency um operations plan concept in the past, I mean, I I believe we would retain the ability to suspend this if it were not, if it were not serving community needs um in our view. Um, so I I feel that while I hear the concerns about it, there um to me, there is less risk in this than some of the other options we've considered in the past, or some of the other um, you know, regulatory steps we've even taken in the past. Um, in that it's intended to be short-term, it's intended to be emergency-based, and it's at our discretion. So if that is not correct, staff, please do correct me. Okay.
Uh, I don't, I don't know what the question is, but I think that what City Attorney Black was wanting was if this is a direction that council wants to move forward with, that some of the I don't know if the right term is editorial language is removed um as a part of that approval. Is that correct, City Attorney Black?
Yeah, I mean, one, one option is to actually rewrite the operations plan so that it only contains operational information. But I think another, I mean, that's yet another step, maybe objected to by others, but I think that your motion could approve the operations and interrupt operations plan. Uh, but but specifically decline to endorse the editorial or opinion-based statements in the plan. And I think that would come together as a single motion. I don't know why not.
I think my question was along the lines of um whether we, we retain the ability to end the um emergency authorization at any time. By approving this, we can also just approve it. Is that correct?
Yes, that's my, that's my opinion. That's why I don't think it really is a precedent. It's a bridge to a different state of affairs. Um, and it's pretty clear that that's what it is. So.
It's intended to fill a gap until there is a more robust resolution in place.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I saw as uh Councilmember Maltin had her hand up and
Uh, Natalie's question covered, Councilmember Arroyo's question covered mine. Thank you.
All right. And uh, any of you are welcome to put, set forth a motion at any time as well. Councilmember Eric Castellano.
I'll make a motion to approve the Humboldt Area Center for Harm Reduction's interim operations plan pending property owner approval of proposed locations while striking the editorial portion of the document. pending property owner approval of proposed locations while striking the editorial portion of the document.
Do I have a second on that?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any more discussion on the item? Councilmember Burgel.
So this looks like it's going to pass pretty clearly. So I would like to also bring back up this idea of vicinity of cleanup. I think that needs specification. Certainly. And there's something else. But I think that's probably the, the most important piece is that, yeah, that we have a vicinity for, for what that cleanup's going to look like. And that not only vicinity, but also what it includes. And I believe that, and I'll say it again, but I believe that when people see caps, when they see the blue waters, when they see the, the cooking kits, when they see alcohol wipes, when they see all of the paraphernalia that goes with a syringe, you don't have to see a syringe to know what that is. So I would like to see all of that picked up, not just, just syringes.
So I have a point of clarification for that. We would have to actually identify that area tonight in order for this to pass, right? We'd have to be specific, we wouldn't bring it back with that.
Mayor, Mayor, it's Bob again. It, it strikes me that the decision on the area of cleanup, the areas of cleanup, because we're talking about different sites, should be made actually on the ground by virtue of your staff going out with Hatcher staff and agreeing to a boundary, agreeing to a perimeter in a way that's practical. And I think that both Councilmember Burgel's notion of what should be included in the cleanup, but also the process by which staff would define an area at each mobile distribution place could be a separate motion. I think it's part and parcel of the discussion points. And I think under the Brown Act, I think it's a, it's a covered variant of what was on the agenda, if you wanted to do it that way.
Okay, so we would have, we would vote first on the item as set forth by Councilmember Castellano and then have a second motion to add those, or we would need to add those first? Oh, you're muted.
I think that's a separate motion that could follow on this.
Okay, then we, we're still then discussing the motion as set forth by Councilmember Castellano. Councilmember Bauer.
Thank you. Yeah, I have a concern, and this is raised by businesses behind the North Coast Co-op as well as the locations. One of those businesses have a, a staff member assaulted in the business in daylight hours. And so, you know, that just doesn't seem like an ideal location to, to have a service right in the middle of a number of businesses, including the Co-op. So I just have, I have a problem with that one. I also have a problem with the bridge site. But I don't know where you relocate that. I understand, and I, you know, there's other services offered there. But it is used by a considerable number of people that frankly are troubled by it. So, but I'm, you know, just put it out there that those are sites that I think need to be reconsidered.
City Manager Slattery, is that site a site that's owned by the city or private property?
It might be the private property owner that's adjacent to. We have a right-of-way there, but their property goes to the middle of the road. So the adjacent property owner would need to provide an approval letter for that. And, you know, if, if council wants to put restrictions as to time, as was discussed here, that a lot of the clientele for AHA are also going to be the clientele for, for Hatcher, that, you know, it could be restricted to that timeframe. So it's not kind of doubling those services in that area and, and having more potential effects.
And Councilmember Arroyo.
I wasn't planning to suggest additional sites, but the, the conversation made me wonder if Open Doors Clinic has been considered as the, you know, their parking area or nearby on that cul-de-sac has been considered as a possibility. I know they're supportive with their current building and property of Hatcher. Inspector Director Allen, would you speak to that?
That location has not been considered. I'm not opposed to considering that option. I think that this portion could also be something that Slattery and I could work on together. If you all are comfortable with it going to council or going to a city manager as a, and a way of expediate, expediting this experience for everyone.
I know, I'm, I do trust City Manager Slattery's judgment and sense of things, but I imagine that there are also community members who would like to comment on proposed changed sites. And so I would want to give people that opportunity. But perhaps other sites could be considered or brought forward in the future, especially if any of the sites prove to not be working out. So, and I, I do want to note that City Attorney Black's recommendation about staff going into the field to just sort of doing, do some ground truthing and determine what distance makes sense would work for me. I was playing around with maps and dropping a pin and measuring, you know, what I thought based on the sites. But that's really just pretty arbitrary. And it would be nice for staff to look and see where, where existing litter does sort of tend to be. And especially since we've, you know, had some rain not so long ago, it might show where, where a cleanup buffer needs to be focused. Excuse me.
Also, City Manager Slattery.
So staff could put that in the approval letter as to certain guidelines to certain sites, what that proximity would be when we, if council approves these locations, that we could put that into the letter.
We would do that before, after this motion passes and when the other motion that asks for that, right? I just want to make sure that that location vicinity is a second motion. Right?
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to, I think we are getting them kind of mixed up. I just want to make sure I keep them in track. That's my job, is just making sure I get it straight. Councilmember Burgel.
So again, then, just a point of clarification. The motion that Councilmember Castellano put on the table, these are all, so what sites are we actually looking at? Are they all that are in their plan? No. So what sites are actually on there and which sites need to be stricken?
So the two sites that need to be stricken, which were agreed upon between Hatcher and staff, was the Hillficker site as well as the HWMA site. And the ones that are up for consideration right now are three properties, two of the cities under the Samoa Bridge and one on the north end of the Bay Shore Mall parking lot. And the third one is a privately-owned one that would be pending a letter of approval from that private owner to be, to, to be okay. They have to get approval from the, from the property owner.
So does that need to be said in the motion, that those two properties are stricken from the, from the plan?
I, I don't think so. It depends, I think if council directs and they're comfortable with staff determining the locations, then I think that would be enough. I, I do agree with Councilmember Arroyo that if those were to change, it would probably be in the best interest of the city to allow for comments on new proposed locations.
Councilmember Molten.
I just wanted to amend my thoughts. I wasn't fully considering the public comment aspect of this, but I do think you're correct. I do think there's correct that new locations should be brought before the public in this forum for consideration. I would just, I, I don't want this to be on the, every agenda between now and the middle of the summer and kind of just like make a friendly request that there not be a lot of shuffling. I mean, I guess to Director Allen, that they're not, you know, that adding an additional site is a, would be something to be added with much consideration or after, you know, giving the other sites a chance. And just try not to bring it back before council a lot.
Can I reply to that?
Yes.
It is absolutely our intention to not be in meetings, if at all possible. We are on the same page. So yeah, definitely would love to not have to be at every meeting.
All right. And so we do have a motion and second and further discussion on the motion brought forth by Councilmember Castellano. Councilmember Arroyo.
In the interest of clarity, Councilmember Castellano, would you be willing to update the motion to reflect the site specifically?
Yes. So do I just need to amend the motion? With the, so the same motion before, with the amendment that the motion speaks to only the three sites that, of, under the Samoa Bridge. Sorry, losing it. The, oh, the, so the north forty. Is there a better term?
The north end of the Bay Shore Mall parking lot.
The Bay Shore Mall.
I knew you'd get that lingo down after our conversation.
Steep learning curve here. And, and Free Meal pending property owner approval.
And I still second. All right. Councilmember Burgel.
Would you be willing to read back the full motion?
It's like a test, okay.
I was wondering, maybe Pam, maybe.
What I have notes on, so the motion before you is approve Humboldt Area Center for Harm Reduction operation plan pending property owner approval of proposed locations, striking the editorial portion of the document with the amendment that speaks to, that this motion, or this action speaks to only the three sites referenced, which, which are under the Samoa Bridge, north end of Bay Shore Mall, and Free Meal pending that property owner's approval.
And we missed interim?
Interim in there?
Where was the interim at?
On kind of the title, so it's.
Before, before the word operations.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm, I'm sorry, this is really, gonna be really annoying, but Free Meal doesn't, it's not actually at Free Meal, it's actually on A Street. So I feel like, could, could I, could it say?
You could, you could, you could reference the map that's, that's, that's called Free Meal associated in the, in the operations plan, because that map does show the actual location.
Okay.
Listen to the minutes, it will actually include the official address, yes.
Thank you.
All right, does that satisfy, is that, you have that all? Councilmember Burgel? All right, any other discussion? We ready to vote on this item? Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Councilmember Castellano.
Aye.
Councilmember Molten.
Aye.
Councilmember Arroyo.
Aye.
Councilmember Bauer.
Hello.
Pardon?
No.
Okay, Councilmember Burgel.
Oh, she fell off.
Wish she hasn't come back in. I mean, I'll call her on the phone here and.
The suspense.
Oh, she's back in, actually.
My phone just died, or my computer just died, so I'm on my phone now. I just am coming in.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay, so we're calling the vote if, are you a?
No.
No, all right. Three yes votes, Councilmember Bauer and Burgel dissenting, motion carries.
All right, and then we will give Councilmember Burgel a minute to get back in and discuss. I believe she wants to make a, an additional motion.
Okay. Your phone, you were coming into the room, Kim, and now you're off again.
Mayor Seaman, may I make an additional comment on this item?
Sure.
I, I just want to note for those who are still on, who are very invested in this item, that I, I really do look forward to having a more robust resolution that includes all of your concerns and that, you know, I see this as an interim measure only. And, and I also look forward to seeing any other proposals that might come forward. You know, in the interest of fairness, that, that all is really going to be valuable. So please stay engaged on this. I know we're saying we don't want to talk about it every meeting, but it is important for people to remain engaged on this topic.
Do you have Councilmember Burgel back yet? Oh, you're muted, Pam.
He is back on and I'm gonna move her now to where you can see her.
Welcome back, Councilmember Burgel.
I have a new device and I'm just learning how to use it and I apologize.
That's okay. And we have voted, and I think you heard the results, but now we're, you are interested in doing a follow-up motion?
Yes. Now I'm all, yes. So I would like to, it's so weird, like, okay. So I would like to move that we, we, let's see, that we allow or have staff go do a walkabout to, to decide the vicinity of pickup. And I would like that items of pickup to be anything that is related to the paraphernalia, whether that be the blue water tubes, whether that be the cooker cans, whether that be Hatcher, the little white papers that they put out, whether that be alcohol pads, all the things that go with use, as well as syringes. Caps.
You'll second, Councilmember Castellano, thank you.
Thank you.
And do we have any more discussion on this item right here? Or are we ready to vote on it? I don't see any discussion. Councilmember Bauer, did you want to say something? All right, let's take a vote on it.
All right, Councilmember Castellano.
Aye.
Councilmember Molten.
Aye.
Councilmember Arroyo.
Aye.
Councilmember Bauer.
Aye.
Councilmember Burgel.
Yes.
Unanimous yes vote, motion carries.
Thank you very much. And that concludes item D1. So at this time, I would like to invite City Manager Slattery to give us your, or to introduce, and I guess Captain O'Neill, to talk about your city manager report.
Thanks again, Mayor Seaman, and good evening again, Mayor Seaman and council members. This has been a. been a topic that's been brought to council many a times and we've been working to get this on the agenda and luckily it's not after 10 o'clock. So Captain O'Neill is here to provide a report on our fireworks regulations right now and, and look at some other policies related to fireworks. So welcome, Captain O'Neill.
Thank you. Good evening, council members and Madam Mayor. I was asked to put on a presentation regarding firework violations and complaints the city has been experiencing for a number of years, then look into some strategies to improve on. I promised City Manager Slattery a brief but informative presentation. So I'll jump right into it as, let me get my screen up and share my screen. Okay, as I said, I looked into the fireworks violations. I figured this starting point would be the Eureka Municipal Code. The Eureka Municipal Code is very pointed towards the Old Town area and Woodley Island with prohibitions for the discharge of fireworks in that area. It's, it's very minimal information as far as fireworks is concerned because the municipal code basically relies on state codes and laws for enforcement purposes. So basically, the Eureka Municipal Code speaks to the fact that it defines fireworks. It states prohibitions for those areas, Old Town and Woodley Island. It defines what Old Town area is, which is north of Forest Street between M and Commercial to the Bay. It gives exceptions for obtaining special permits by the fire chief or designated need for fireworks displays. It also defines safe and sane fireworks for us and also storage of small quantities of safe and sane fireworks in that area. But as I said, the Eureka Municipal Code basically falls back to state law as far as enforcement purposes of fireworks violations and statutes. So with that, I went basically into the California Health and Safety Code and the California Penal Code, which are the enforcement sections that we use when we address these issues. So it's the California Health and Safety Code states that dangerous fireworks and possession of them is illegal if it's without a valid permit. It speaks to transferring dangerous fireworks and how that takes place and how the permits, what permits you have to have. It speaks to safe and sane fireworks and how they have to be licensed, the place of businesses and permits that have to be obtained. It also speaks to the timeframe that fireworks can be sold, which is 12:00 PM on June 28th through 12:00 PM on July 6th. It speaks to the furnishing of fireworks to minors and what has to take place for minors to possess, what the permissions have to be made by parents and that parents are ultimately responsible for any injuries or damage caused by the use fireworks by children. It speaks to discharging near flammable locations, discharging fireworks for the purpose of harming another or causing chaos, fear or panic, and also public firework displays and what process have to be taken. The penal code that we often use for enforcement of fireworks, fireworks and fireworks violations and addressing those are basically reckless fire setting, which would be the result of the use of fireworks that causes a structure, forest or property to be burned because of the use and also disturbing the peace, which is any person maliciously and willfully disturbs another person by loud and unreasonable noise. These are the sections that we use when we're enforcing the fireworks laws within the city of Eureka. So what other concerns do we have? We have the concerns of injuries. Obviously, dangerous fireworks, aerial fireworks, they all can be unstable and have led to serious injuries. We have fire hazards. You know, we have aerial fireworks that are dropping embers on top of buildings to dry, you know, grassy areas that can light on fire. So we have fire hazards we're concerned about and also anxiety. And the loud noises associated with aerial and other dangerous fireworks can cause fear, anxiety, PTSD issues with persons living in the immediate area and also with animals and pets that are in the area also. So what are our challenges? The challenges we have in law enforcement is locating the violators. Oftentimes, there's only a few fireworks that are discharged at a time. The reporting parties can only provide general locations. So we're trying to locate people that are setting off these fireworks, but it's a very difficult task for us because we have little to go on. Generally, we have a several block area to try and figure out what backyard or alleyway or where these were set off at. We have flight distances. The aerial fireworks can fly for several hundred yards before they discharge. So it makes it hard to estimate where the source was for that aerial firework. Mobility. These are small items. The launch tubes and the fireworks aren't very big in size, so they're easily moved about and can be brought indoors or taken out of the area while we're responding to deal with the issue. And then staffing. Obviously, we're a busy city. We have a lot of calls for service that we handle. So when a call or a complaint comes into the dispatch center, our officers hopefully are not tied up and can respond immediately, but oftentimes they are on calls for service. And some of these have to be delayed before we respond to the area. So with that, I looked into statistical data, looking at 2018, 2019, and 2020. In that timeframe, we had a total of just under 500 calls for service for fireworks complaints. So I kind of broke down, I looked at each call and I broke it down into three categories. Those categories being heard only. These were calls where a reporting party heard what they believed to be fireworks, but they did not see or have an idea of the source location. So we just responded to the RP's location and did the best we could to look. We have in the vicinity, which means the reporting party heard or saw what they believed to be fireworks, and they can give us a general location, a few block area that we may be able to start our search for the violator. And then we have known locations. These were reporting parties actually saw the fireworks and they could provide us a description and/or address for the source. So as you can see for calls for service, in 2018, we had about 40 calls for service were heard only. We had almost 60 calls for service that were in the vicinity. And then we had under 20 that had gave us known locations to work off of. In 2019, we had about a little over 50 heard only. We had around 40 in the vicinity and then again, under 20 that gave us known locations. And then we have an uptick in 2020, and I'll speak to that in the next slide, where we had about a hun, a little under 100 that were heard only. We had about 120 that were in the vicinity. And then once again, around 20 or less that were known locations that we could work with. On the side, you'll see a July 2020 heat map. What that heat map is, is I took those calls in July and I put them into the RP's location, the information we had, and basically to give us an idea of what might be helpful in locating where these violators are setting off these dangerous fireworks. As you can see, it was citywide. There was some, you know, higher volume of it near the waterfront, base, or excuse me, the Small Bridge area, the 14th Street area and south of Henderson Center area. But once again, you see, our guys were going all over the city, responding to these types of complaints. So then I broke this down into years and months. As you can see, January, and then if you drop down to December, there's kind of a higher number of calls for service. That obviously is New Year's area. That's when the fireworks kind of start coming up again. They say pretty low call volume throughout the year, except when we get to June and obviously July and the Fourth of July specifically. And that's quite the influx of complaints. Obviously, it's because we've got fireworks being sold, Fourth of July celebrations in the homes and people having their own events. So you can see in 2018, we had the 62 calls for service in 2018, 47 in 2019, and then the big uptick in 2020. The reason why I got a notation at the bottom about COVID-19 affecting the calls, I don't have solid information on that. That is just my, looking into the numbers and the fact that because there were no local festivals on the Fourth of July, there were no firework shows. There was nothing really for people to go out and go to events. They did a lot more things at home, had a lot more fireworks events at their houses, which obviously would lead to the upswing and complaints about fireworks in the neighborhoods. So that would be kind of my impression on those numbers. It'll be interesting to see if we are open up in this July where we do have those festivals and fireworks displays, if those numbers, call numbers would drop again. But once again, we'll have to wait for that to come around. So looking at strategies for addressing this, I've had some input from citizens over the years about just a straight prohibition of fireworks within the city, safe and sane, just across the board. I don't think that would be that effective due to the fact that dangerous fireworks are already illegal under the Health and Safety Code. They hold, depending on the weights and whatnot, misdemeanor to felony charges. Our Eureka Municipal Codes would be misdemeanors and fractions. So it's still, it's already illegal and the complaints we get are mostly for the aerial and the loud bangs, which usually are attributed to M80s and the larger fireworks that fall into this dangerous fireworks. The other point is thousands of citizens celebrate Independence Day annually by purchasing safe and sane fireworks. They mostly follow the law and they're responsible and they're discharging. And we, really, it goes without incident. We, with the amount of fireworks that's sold and the amount of calls even that we respond to, obviously, there's a lot going on that we're not getting complaints about. I feel that the prohibition would more punish those that follow the law, while those that violate the law are likely to continue their illegal practices because they are now, even though it is illegal. And it's not likely to be an effective solution to this issue. And then finally, the other point I, I kind of looked at was the safe and sane fireworks sales are historically an important fundraising source for our nonprofits, our churches, our schools, our community programs. And the prohibition would remove that funding source to those programs, which would really limit their ability to thrive. So what strategies can we look at? So I've been working with Humboldt Bay Fire and what we're looking at putting in place and will be putting in place is threefold. We'll have an education piece, which is using the social media and other, or information disseminating resources like local news outlets and whatnot. We'll be putting out a lot more public education material to remind citizens of the hazards, the laws and the penalties of illegal firework use. We'll work with Humboldt Bay Fire with extra patrols. They'll be out in air trucks. We'll be out in our patrol cars, especially end of, excuse me, June and July, where we've got the upswing and fireworks complaints, actively trying to locate the violators as in the act per se, and, you know, holding them accountable for their activities. And then online reporting. We've got a form that's almost done. It's basically a PDF fillable form that will be on the city's website. Citizens would be able to click on it. It would have information boxes that we need for our investigative purposes to locate these violators and hold them responsible. Once the citizen wants to submit these, this form, it would go not only to the Eureka Police Department's point of contact for review and for basically directing to our POP unit or whatever unit would be best to look into our enforcement of or trying to locate these violators, but it would also go to Humboldt Bay Fire's point of contact for their follow-up on the fire side of things. Those would be the three strategies currently that we could easily put into place and we would start this year and in June. With that, do we have any questions for me?
Councilmember Bauer?
Yeah, I appreciate the presentation, Captain O'Neill. I've received a bunch of, you know, complaints about fireworks. And it's funny because somebody let off a brick of firecrackers the other day. So I was like, it's January, little late for fireworks, but coming from a, a family that loves a good firework show, I'm adamantly opposed to banning fireworks in this community. But I do see the need to, like, you have a great plan developed to kind of end this, you know, fireworks, Fourth of July goes from about June 1st to September 30th now and a bunch of other times of the year in between. And that's getting kind of old. And I understand people that have pets that, that don't do well with fireworks. But, um, yeah, it's a, it is a challenge. It seems like it's gotten worse. And maybe it's because of COVID. People are home, they're bored, you know? But I, I would say a ban is something that I would be against for sure. But thank you for the, the good plan you put together.
Anybody else have comments or questions? Councilmember Castellano and then Arroyo?
Thanks, Captain O'Neill, for being here. It's nice to see you. It's been a while. And, you know, I am not interested in a prohibition. I also have enjoyed fireworks in my life. But I also think, you know, and a constituent sent me an article that, you know, throughout California, there's been a rise in fireworks and there is some connection to the pandemic or they're assuming there's a connection to the pandemic. I have a couple of questions. So, you know, I definitely agree with some of the measures that you proposed. I have some questions around like, one, you know, for some reason, in the municipal code, it talks only about, you know, them being impermissible on Woodley Island or in Old Town. And I'm, I'm wondering if you thought about extending any of those zones and/or adding like timeframes or dates, you know, like, for me, I'm like, okay, you know, like, after 10:00, you know, like, in my mind, things kind of change, like, when it's not around, like, New Year's or Fourth of July, or if it's after a certain hour. So I'm, I'm just curious if you thought about that and what your thoughts are on that?
Absolutely. I mean, we could look into, obviously, through the municipal code, setting more dates, you know, week before, week after Fourth of July and, you know, five days prior to New Year's or whatever the case may be for within the city, which would be a tool for law enforcement. But it's how, how would that be worded? Is, you know, obviously, dangerous fireworks are illegal anyway, regardless of the time of year. It would be the safe and sane you'd be speaking to. So it'd be something that would have to be, go through council and get approval to be put into place for basically prohibiting safe and sane fireworks at times other than what is described in the municipal code, which would be that timeframe that would be agreed upon.
Councilmember Arroyo?
Remember Castellano, did that fully answer what you were looking for? I couldn't tell if you were frozen or not. Thank you so much. Thank you, Captain O'Neill. This is helpful and I, I agree with the general direction. I, I do understand where people are coming from who have severe PTSD and who, who are, who have also, who also have legitimate concerns about potential impact of fires from reckless fireworking. I have the good fortune of having neighbors who like to set off fireworks really kind of just into my yard. They don't, and I, I'm a neighbor who's unlikely to report them, interestingly enough. I know exactly who it is. I know exactly who it is. In the interest of maintaining our relationship, we've just tried to kind of work on it. But it gets really old when people set off fireworks like in the middle of the street. So I've seen my neighbors like almost get hit by a car while fireworking. Definitely shoot a number of fireworks into my, into my yard by accident. They're not like taking aim at me. And then the trash leftover is just insane and my dogs are peeing themselves. And it's just, it's not, it's not fun for me. It's so fun for them. And I can see how much fun it is for them. And it's, you know, it's like low level misery. So I don't feel like it's the top priority for me as a councilperson. But I also realized like I don't have those, those particular issues with PTSD or, you know, more severe concerns. So, so I want to try to find the balance and, and I, I hope that, I, I do actually think that partnering with the fire department will be helpful because I think people think about fire hazards differently than they think about, unfortunately, than they think about other things. Like folks might just not have as much compassion for individuals who struggle with loud noises, but they would be concerned about fire. So I, I think that's a great direction and hope that can be emphasized. I was just curious how many violations? Is this something that people do get caught doing? I know there was that big case in Myrtle Town, just outside of city limits with the illegal fireworks, slinger mafia, whatever. Do we, do we know if there have been violations that have, if folks actually caught in Eureka?
Well, no, last week we had the arrest of the individual that was basically creating little metal encased fireworks or firecrackers. And he was taken to jail. That was a CSET and POP arrest. We, we, you know, going through the calls, we did have contact, we did psych people. Unfortunately, like I say, the, a lot of it has to do with the type of firework, the amounts, the weight, which is odd, but you have to have so much weight to meet a misdemeanor, meet a felony, those kinds of things. Sometimes they were events where they were, the fireworks were seized. It was a busy, you know, Fourth of July and we found fireworks. They were seized, admonishments were given and the staff moved on. But once again, to try and work on solving this problem, I'm hoping that like the online reporting will get us some more information to help us work towards these people that are doing the, the aerial fireworks and the large scale mortars and the things that are, are really what the complaints are coming from. You know, it's funny going through all these calls, there was a huge bang is one of the big things you'll hear. That's the description, which is either a mortar style or a large M-80 or that type of firework. So those are the dangerous fireworks. We really need to locate those violators and get stopped because that's where the injuries come from, that's where the fires come from. And that's where the PTSD and the other issues come from are those large scale fireworks.
Do we think any of it is Tannerite and people target shooting?
I don't believe so. Like I say, a lot of the stuff that I read in the calls for service due to the area and the description or stuff is mostly aerial fireworks, mortar style aerial fireworks was what I gathered from the descriptions.
Okay. And then lastly, just I see that Chief Robertson's also on the call, but do you or he have a sense of how many, you know, have there been fires and injuries related to this? I mean, is that an area of additional education and outreach need?
I know we had some, I'll let Chief Robertson speak to that. Obviously, they get there, they go to the fire and then, and they're discovering what the cause was. They can get the indication, but I believe we had at least one or two last Fourth of July. But don't hold me to that. That would be something he can speak to.
Hello. Yes, every year we get injuries and fires. We haven't had a significant fire for several years. But I do recall one was actually a New Year's Eve where we had pretty significant fire in Old Town along the waterfront in a Victorian. So it's, there's definitely that, that issue. And like I said, we get injuries every year as well. Those vary in nature as well.
Chief, if I remember right, this last year we had like four fires, but they were all for the safe and sane that were just not disposed of properly.
Yes, but not, not significant.
Illegal ones.
Right. It's the parachute flares that cause the most significant issues, like Captain O'Neill said earlier.
I watched a house burn to the ground as a little girl because of a bottle rocket that landed on a, a tri roof. I will never forget it. So.
That's horrifying.
It was terrible.
Yeah, I think that's the angle to get people to care. I don't know what gets people to care, but I hope that not burning your neighbor's house down is one of those things. Not hurting kids. I mean, really, like the, so, you know, that, but also enforcement. If, I know it's so tough to catch people, but if we do, I hope that, that we're getting the word out that they were also fined. And I appreciate that, that our, our staff do such a good job of that. But just continuing to do that seems like it's very valuable and thank you.
That would be part of the educational piece of when we do make these arrests, citations, whatever the outcome was, is we add that to our educational piece that we are letting the public know that, you know, we are holding people accountable for these activities.
So Captain O'Neill, I know that I was really interested in the online reporting piece too because sometimes you just don't want to call the police, but you want to tell somebody, especially when it's happening over and over and over again. At the point that somebody does that, then how will you use that? You'll just kind of see if you can kind of get those heat spots through those reporting or?
Well, what we'll do is we have a point of contact identified at both Humboldt Way Fire and at the Eureka Police Department. It'll be vetted as it comes in. If it's got specific locations or anything that we can work with for the violators, that'll be handed off to our POP team for further investigation and hopefully we can hold people accountable. If it's just very vague information, that's the kind of stuff we'll use for heat maps and hopefully we get enough of reports that we can slowly start creating those areas that we can start looking at and through extra patrol investigations and other means, hopefully identify violators that way for the ones that we don't have specific locations.
So really, that's the benefit of the online reporting then is just that you can get more information from more people.
More apt to give us more online. I'm using online reporting because they're not talking to somebody. They have more time to think about their answers. They actually have, you know, our dispatch center is very busy, so they're not going to go through all the questions that are going to be on the online report. And now they have an opportunity to look at the form and go, wait, I know that, I know that. And they're giving us more information.
Excellent. Councilmember Castellana.
Thank you. I just wanted to reiterate that I think the online reporting will be valuable. I, in, in my neighborhood, I would assume, I mean, I'm fairly certain that fireworks go off weekly, you know, if not twice a week. But I've never reported it because, you know, I know that dispatch has a lot on their plate and, you know, and I know how difficult it is to identify and find these things. But I think it could be significant data information that may be useful for determining policy in the future. Like, like perhaps after six months of online reporting, we realize there's some, you know, other issue that we need to address or something like that. But I think that it's going to be a huge resource, hopefully. And, and I think some of it will be making sure that the public's aware of the resource and having a good kind of rollout of it and, and, you know, media around making sure that people can use it.
Any other comments or questions? Councilmember Bragoff.
So I just, I wanted to thank you. Am I muted again? No. Thank you for your very thorough report. The thing that I get most my, most complaints about are the mortars. I don't think people really care much about the sparklers or the, you know, piccolo peats necessarily. It's the mortars. And I just wanted to make mention, you know, we talked a little bit about people have brought forward PTSD. And I, I just want to really reiterate that that's a real thing. I have several friends that are veterans that on New Year, or on Fourth of July, they have to like hide in their house and like turn up their TV and like they cannot. It triggers them. And so I think that that's a critical piece that our community needs to be aware of as well is that we talk about PTSD. It sounds like, you know, something that's not that big of a deal. But frankly, these people have been through hell and it is a big deal and it's definitely a consideration. So I just wanted to put that out there. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I really appreciate it as well. Councilmember Maltin.
Just piling up, I think that that's a good way to appeal to people's conscience regarding PTSD because people tend to stigmatize mental health disorders. But because it does predominantly affect veterans or it does affect a lot of veterans and that that can be an angle to take on that. And I'm really appreciating the educational piece. I come from a city where people celebrate by firing guns into the air. And, you know, it took a, a, a real tragedy for that habit to change in my old neighborhood. So, yeah, let's not set any more Victorians on fire. Thank you for your report.
Thank you.
PTSD and the pet thing too is a big, big deal. I think that motivates a lot of people or at least inspires people to consider what it does to dogs. People love, love, love their dogs. So.
Like more than people sometimes.
Sometimes you can hear mine snoring in the back.
I was going to say, is that your dog?
Yeah. Horrible noises that I'm afraid I'm going to get all like Giuliani'd or something. And it's definitely my dog.
I thought you were growling at us a little bit under your breath.
Anybody else? Thank you. Thank you so much for looking into this. We get a lot of calls. I get a lot of calls as well. So.
Thank you.
Anything to add to your, to the report, City Manager Slattery?
That's all I had tonight, Mayor Seaman. I just want to thank Captain O'Neill for the comprehensive report and his patience in providing it to council because it's been on the, it's been on the queue for a while. So thank you, Captain O'Neill. And that's all I have.
Thank you so much. And then with that, we will move on to city council reports. And I will start at the top and ask Councilmember Castellana.
Let's see. Oh, you know, I'm going to save some of the depths for the strategic visioning because it's coming right up and I'm so excited. But I do want to make sure that the public knows that, you know, every Friday for the month of February, we will be in the strategic visioning process, which is where we set our priorities as a council for the year. So please get in touch with us, get in touch with your council members. There, there will be opportunities for public comment also around that. So it's great to have you participate. And that's just something I want to speak to that I've noticed, you know, that we've just had reduced kind of general public comment. So, you know, I know it's harder to access Zoom. So if there are, you know, other ways that you need to reach out to your council members, please do so. I'm continuing to go to meetings around issues of broadband, economic resilience, the houseless population, housing, beautification, neighborhood support. And I've been working with a group of neighbors kind of near Wabash and in setting up a neighborhood watch group. And then I, I'm hosting a regional performing arts roundtable to, on January 24th, which is a Sunday at 5:00 PM, to really help performers of all stripes across the region, you know, gather, gather together and help to advocate for their needs as, you know, performers are often left out of many of the economic development opportunities due to the pandemic, but yet have been out of work for many, many months now. And I attended the, last week, the League of California Cities Housing, Community and Economic Development Policy Committee, Committee meeting, which I'm a member of that committee. And HWMA Board of Directors meeting. I just want to let everyone know we're still working on recycling. We haven't forgotten about it. It's still something that we're very concerned about. And I'm still involved with the people. That's all for me.
Thank you. Councilmember Arroyo.
Okay. I thought we were going in word order.
Top of the screen.
This is great. And well, a few things. I have, we all got to participate in a conversation about broadband. And that was really an excellent opportunity to have a joint meeting with our Planning Commission and our Economic Development Commission. So I love to see opportunities for us to, to do things like that together with the folks who also support and advise in our city. I've been having some initial conversations around the concept of a mitigation bank, which I'll be working on some more with City Manager Slattery and some other stakeholders in the community. In short, it would offer the opportunity to have a, a bank of projects or locations for environmental mitigation in the region so that when development does occur that has some impacts, there are, you know, kind of ready to go projects that could improve the, the local environment and, and offer some restoration and enhancement. So that is an exciting prospect and I look forward to working on it more, but this is just in its infancy right now. I had the opportunity to really have a great one-on-one talk with both Councilmember Maltin and Councilmember Bauer, who I, I really have enjoyed knowing as community members and, and now enjoying as colleagues and getting to know them. So thank you for making time for that. I'm participating in the, this isn't exactly with my council hat on, but as a concerned community member, I've been participating in the Water Safety Coalition, which is a group of stakeholders that have been meeting together for many years to work on issues of water safety. And so the current things that rose to the top and what we most recently met about was about the North Jettie and ensuring that people are more aware when they visit that site about dangerous wave conditions. And there are some perhaps additional access limitations in place, such as limitations to driving out on the actual jetty itself, which, which used to have a chain across it and now doesn't just because of rest and the conditions. So anyway, it was, it was very heartening to talk about that. And I know when folks visit the area, you know, unfortunately, people can be in danger. And then, you know, it's actually about 50/50 as far as locals and non-locals who get swept away by sneaker waves. And so just getting the word out to community members here is just as important as to visitors. So continuing to think through that and come up with ideas around water safety, but I welcome any of your ideas as well. I've been also working with my department at HSU, the Environmental Science and Management Department, on an initial idea to try to get more environmental planning and policy majors and energy and climate majors involved in local internships and really build out a program where those students can have meaningful service learning opportunities. And so I'll be exploring that further as well. And, you know, really as HSU goes down this planning phase of determining whether they're going to be a polytechnic, which is a really amazing opportunity for our region, they'll want to see more and more opportunities for students to really get that applied learning in their community. So it feels like a time when the city of Eureka could be involved in that in some way, shape or form as well. I am having wrist surgery in the next two days. And so I'll be, I'll be out of commission for email for a couple of weeks. I'll make sure to send an away message on my phone or my city email as well. But if anyone's trying to reach me, please, please call me and understand if my communications are very brief or, or limited. It is something I've been waiting to do for a long time. So it's a good thing. And lastly, I just wanted to make a couple of comments about, about what happened at the Capitol and talk about why I think it's important that we acknowledge that. And, you know, I, I, like many of you, I was shocked and. shocked and dismayed and saddened to see what happened. And as more information comes out, it only gets, gets harder. As someone who, I'm in the Coast Guard, I'm in the military, I, I, I work on behalf of the federal government. Right now I'm on active duty orders and I do that, um, full-time essentially, in addition to my role here at the city. And so I, I have a lot of faith in our institutions and I know all of us in local government do as well. And, um, in some way, shape or form, we really believe in our institutions and the role that we play. And so to see those be compromised is really upsetting. And I also think we, um, the, the takeaway for me is not just to be upset and angry and sad, but to, um, continue to uphold the strength of our institutions locally and all of the organizations that we're a part of and ensure that we are, we are pushing for change, but we're also playing by the rules that we've all agreed to. Um, and so I think when we get these challenges from community members about, you know, asking us to abide by the rules that we have in place, that I think it's a very healthy dialogue and an important part of being in democracy. So without going on and on about it, um, you know, I think this is an important moment for us to be, um, be strong and be, um, good, reliable decision makers and be transparent in our policies. So I take hurt from all of you and from the city of Eureka and, um, I am impressed with the work we do, but I hope that we continue to hold that in my, our minds as we move forward. And that is it for me.
Thank you. Councilmember Moulton.
Thank you. Uh, since Councilmember Arroyo left off on the sixth, I will start there. On the sixth, I was, I happened to be touring all of the fire stations with, uh, Chief Roberts here, which was a very, um, pleasant but surreal experience to be going from one station to another and in between in the van, listening to this unfolding on the national scale. And when I was reflecting back on it that evening, I was very glad that I spent, um, that I spent my day looking at and witnessing what, uh, what real, honest, good public efforts can do when we, when we put our mind to it and when we work together and when we make things work, we can make some things really work. And, um, you know, helping keep everybody's houses from catching on fire, helping keep people safe and educated and healthy is, uh, something that we can accomplish. And, um, I think all the, all the firefighters and all the staff and the folks that I met that day, just really made me feel really good about the, the public works that we're engaged in. Not that firefighting is remotely controversial, but it was good to see anyway. And also that they're all like really happy and they really like their stations and they got a lot of pride in their work and, and the good that they do in the community. And that was, it was uplifting interspersed with these terrifying radio reports. The big news over here in Second Ward is that the Jacobs Campus is coming down. Everyone is super excited. People keep texting me pictures. Uh, I just think that speaks to, um, how things can take a really long time to roll along. And then all of a sudden, boom, big dramatic change, you know, all the stuff that was going on inside the buildings. People couldn't necessarily see and now they're, uh, getting to see that big change. And I'm excited to have been told that, um, we should be looking forward to no more buildings there, uh, by the end of the summer, I think, roundabout summer. Um, I did my first meeting with a roundtable with the League of California Cities, meeting with council members and mayors from all over the state that is in education. It really reinforced my, um, appreciation for what a unique community we have, what a, um, culturally and economically diverse area, what a fantastic base of interesting people and ideas that come out of here, how many nonprofits we have, how supportive our locals are of our local businesses. Did that meeting this morning with Mayor Seaman and a bunch of other folks that was convened by Eureka Main Street. And they actually had some hard data that people, that businesses feel really supportive and that locals tend to want to support local businesses. And my conversations with the League of California Cities reinforce that that is, uh, more unique than it should be. So I'm really proud of that aspect of our community. I'm really grateful for that because, um, you know, it's going to take all of us to get through this together. And by this, I mean life. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bauer.
Yeah, um, I, I represent the city on the, um, Redwood Coast Energy Authority. And I went to the first meeting there and that was really interesting, um, what's going on in, in, in the community. The airport, I'll probably butcher this, but the airport is putting in a ton of solar panels and, um, and eventually will be completely self-sufficient. Uh, they could work off the grid, which thinking of the size of that operation and what goes on, it's really a cool thing. And, and it, and it gets my mind, you know, spinning about what we could do, you know, with our own buildings and, 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 you know, becoming more, um, um, energy self-sufficient. So really interested in what's going on with that organization and I recommend, um, tuning in if you can. I also, um, did the Firehouse Tour, uh, with Chief Robertson, and that was super cool to kind of see it too, that this, uh, you know, ring of fire stations around our city. You understand the complexity of response and, um, having those in these, those locations, it makes sense. And it was really a good educational experience for myself to see that. And, um, pretty fun to see what those guys are doing and to talk with them, uh, with the, you know, firefighters. I also participated in the Joint Powers Authority meeting, just kind of, you know, as a, a board member there. And, you know, looking at budget and how we're doing. And it's nice to see that things are pretty, pretty sound. We're on sound financial footing. And, um, yeah, so that's a good thing for our city. Yeah, that'll be going on. Uh, went to the broadband meeting, which was really cool to see trying to get more high-speed, uh, capacity. Great to see so many, uh, parts of our community involved in that, in that process. League of Cities is coming up for, uh, us new council members. We're going to have, be involved in four days of, well, really three days of, um, learning what it means to be a council member and all the, the, what goes on in city councils throughout California. So I'm excited. That actually starts Thursday. Um, excited to, to see, you know, how things work and, and hear from a bunch of other, you know, city council people, mayors and whatnot. I, I hope to go to, or I plan to go to Eureka Schools. Every student succeeds. I'm excited about that. And Mayor Seaman talked about that a little bit. I think that's tomorrow. Should be really fun to see, you know, see, see what students are doing. And, you know, other than that, um, I just wanted to say one thing about, about what's going on with COVID, you know, being in a household with a, a healthcare provider, you know, um, you know, we're losing and, and it's strange to see how much misinformation and how people still don't get the repercussions of this, you know, when we're young, it's like, I'm affected. I can't, you know, go to the bars. Uh, what a horrible thing, but we're losing all of our elders. And I don't think people understand that or enough, you know. And I've always valued my grandparents who have passed away and loved all the time I spent with them. And the population that's most affected are our elders and we should value that. We should value, um, age and knowledge, you know, all that, all those experiences that help inform how we're going to act in the future. And I wish people understood that, uh, the sacrifice of doing what we're doing, you know, Zooming right now, um, is insignificant to the life of, uh, of an old person, you know, because we're all going to be there too. And, um, I just hope people understand that. Anybody that's listening that may be upset by restrictions or, you know, that it's really important to just tough it out, you know, we're getting there and, and there's hope, you know, there's the, uh, a big change is coming tomorrow and, um, hopefully we'll have leadership that steps up and protects us and, you know, vaccinations come, come sooner. But I'm hopeful that, uh, the future's brighter, you know, for all of us. And, uh, yeah. And it's nice to know that there's so many people that are, uh, interested in community. And, uh, it's fun being on city council with you all. I just appreciate it. So, thanks.
Councilmember Bregal.
Well, this has been some great, um, council reports tonight. I really appreciated them, really heartfelt. So I just wanted to bring forward this idea of, um, bringing back to council, uh, looking at the potential for, uh, the city to look into partnering with maybe the county about a SEP and what that would look like. And I know when we were talking about this earlier, it seemed like there was some interest. So I guess I need some head nods if you're interested in listening, uh, about that. So I see one from Scott, I see one, okay, great. Thank you so much. Let's see, so, well, I took a few days off after the sixth, then I've been working in my garden and just really, you know, trying to get back to, uh, what's important, what's, what's important. And, um, I did go out on a cleanup with Pack Out Green Team, as I mentioned earlier today. They did a special cleanup actually on Woodley Island, uh, because of the King tides. They were concerned that much of the camp was going to end up in the bay. And so as I mentioned earlier, there was just, I don't have the amounts of trash and syringes and things that we find, but it was, it was an insane amount. And then lastly, um, oh, and I'm really grateful that the Eureka City Schools thing isn't at eight in the morning tomorrow. So I'm going to try and attend that too because it's in the evening. That's terrible. But, um, I just, you know, I am so hopeful, um, for, for a new day tomorrow. And I just really wanted to bring, um, bring forth something, you know, in 2017, the previous council set intention for what we wanted in our city. And I just wanted to reread that because I think it's, uh, it's important. And this was a, um, resolution of the city council affirming human rights, inclusiveness, environmental sustainability, affordable healthcare and religious freedom. Whereas in light of the current climate in our country and the negativity and hate that is being fostered, and whereas Eureka will not turn our back on people from other countries who bring us such richness to our city, we will continue to build bridges, not walls. And whereas we will never back down on human rights, whether in healthcare, the workplace, or any other area threatened by others who treat people as objects to be de- demeaned or objects to be assaulted. And just as important, we will ensure our youth grow up with role models who show them they can be or do anything. I can't find my glasses. Um, and whereas that there will be no conversion therapy, no withdrawal of rights in Eureka. And to all the LGBT, IQ, IA people in our city and all over the country who feel scared, bullied or alone, you matter, you are seen and you are loved. Whereas that we still believe in this nation's founding principle of religious freedom. We do not ban people for their faith and the only list we keep are invitations to come pray together. And whereas the Eureka Police Department is committed to building trust between police and communities of color, so all citizens feel safe in their neighborhoods. And whereas our residents are committed to environmental sustainability and that climate change is real and that, that clean power, zero waste and other measures to protect future generations are a priority. And whereas affordable, universal healthcare should be a continuing priority for the state of California and the United, United States. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Eureka, condemns all hate crimes and hate speech. We will fight discrimination and recklessness in all its forms. We place the highest value on human rights. Further resolved, that this resolution be forwarded to Senators Feinstein, Harris, Representative Huffman and demonstrate our city's commitment to fairness and inclusion. And I just wanted to read that because I feel like, um, we're on the precipice of change and we have an opportunity to really make some positive change and to divorce ourselves from this, this ugliness that has been occurring over the last several years. So I'm hopeful that we'll pay attention and walk within tension as we treat each other, um, more fairly and equitable. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. And this is where I would adjourn, but I always have one final thing that I forgot to say during my report because it's before everybody else's. I do want to thank Lain Muller, who came and did a presentation to the COVID Economic Resiliency Consortium. I spoke to several, several people afterwards and they were so uplifted by his report, which is the same one he gave to us about the sales tax revenues from the city and just how we are responding and, and being resilient in the face of COVID from an economic standpoint. So, um, Lain, the presentation was very informative and it was informative in a way that made people feel very good. So thank you so much for coming and even made Arcata a little bit jealous. So I'm now a little sad about that. On that note, I will say have a great couple of weeks and we will see you guys next time. Bye.